The meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the Redevelopment Authority to Order. Today is Thursday, July 18th, 2019. It is just 8:30 a.m. We're at the Community Center at the Sierra Room, also streaming on the Internet. And if you get Charter Cable or the cable system, you will see us on the Government Access Channel. Can we have a roll call, please, Aubrey? Thank you.
Dead mic.
Dead mic.
Good morning. Off to a good start. Supervisor Giomi?
Good morning, I'm here.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell?
Here.
Supervisor Barrett?
Here.
Mayor Crowe?
Here. Can we call in our good friend Mark Seer from the Salvation Army to get us started today? Good morning, Mark.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you humbly asking your presence. Enter this room and bless this meeting. Encourage our leaders and strengthen them. Bless their staff as well and all our city employees, our law enforcement officers, and first responders as well. Lord, we pray for you to guide our leaders to put what's best for our city and its people first. Bless them and give them wisdom and understanding. Father, we pray these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you for getting us started. Stacy, you want to lead us in the pledge this morning?
Absolutely.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Stacy. All right, we'll now take up item number five, public comment. This is a time for public to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this body. We also take public comment generally through each of the agenda items where it's appropriate. We also take public comment at the end of the meeting and on redevelopment. We'll have additional public comment before and after. Okay, let's take up. Anybody in the public comment? Anybody want to weigh in this morning? Yeah, come on up, come on. Sit, come on, sit down.
My name is Steve Perez.
Hang on, Steve, hang on, Steve. Sit down a minute. We've got to turn it on so we can get everything done there, Steve.
I didn't know this would be that priority. I live at 304 West Garden Gateway. I've lived here about two years now, retired down from Washington State. My subject I'd like to discuss is the waste management requirement on everybody having to be billed for their refuge. And I went to them and they have a requirement where I can require an exemption. And I qualified for that, so everything's fine. Now they tell me I have to renew one year afterwards and I have to submit 12 receipts from the dump that I've gone to. And I consider that kind of excessive because I recycle, I'm a sole inhabitant, and I really don't put that much refuge out. So I would like that requirement amended to every three months, then I would have four tickets from the dump, so I could then re-up for my exemption.
I don't know if we can do that because it's already been, there's a contract that's in place on it, Steve. But on the other hand, we'll have somebody take a look at your particular situation from the city and talk with Waste Management. We'll have somebody take a look.
Yeah, well, I already talked to Waste Management and they said I was supposed to come talk to you folks.
You can talk to us anytime you want, but that's what I'm saying. We will have somebody from the city side of stuff looking, look into it.
Yeah, because I really don't put out that much refuge in order to justify once a month going to the dump. I mean, I do get with my neighbors and I have them throw on what they can, so I can put their stuff too. But it really doesn't justify my lifestyle for what I'm trying to do with recycling and...
I get it. Do you have large cans or small cans?
Well, they gave three cans to everybody.
Did you get the large ones?
I didn't have much choice. They just brought them out.
Did you get the small ones or the large ones?
Large ones, three. One's for regular garbage, one's for refuge, one's for recycle, and one's for yard waste.
Okay, all right. You're at 304 West Garden Gate, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Steve, spell your last name for the record, please. Okay, we'll take a look. But again, there's a contract that's in place. We have to have somebody, I don't, I'm not familiar right now to tell you the nits and nats of what that says right now, but I think the city can take a look at your particular situation and see where you are.
Well, sure. I just considered that requirement kind of excessive for anybody who's going for the exemption because they're going to be going to the dump anyway, but I don't see why they have to go once a month. You know, they're really not going to have that much refuge, I don't feel, if they're just exempting.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you for your time, sir.
All right, let's, any other public comment? Anybody? Okay, I don't see any. So let's take up item six. This is a possible approval of the minutes of June 20th. Everybody had a chance to look at those? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for June 20th, 2019, as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, nay, carried. Okay, let's take up the agenda. Any, we can take this. Let's take up this consent agenda. Anybody want, any board member wants something pulled off the consent agenda this time? Anybody want something? Any member of the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda for individual discussion? Okay, I don't see any. So let's, then we'll, board members, you wanted, any change to the agenda as published? Anybody? Okay, then without objection, we will take the agenda, we'll adopt the agenda as published. Let's now all move to the floor and we'll start with the recognition of Law Enforcement and Public Safety Crime Prevention Month. Okay? We got everybody here. All right. Chris, good to see you this morning. Okay, this is a proclamation for National Night Out Law Enforcement and Public Safety Crime Prevention Month, August 2019, whereas the National Association of Town Watch and Carson City Sheriff's Office are sponsoring the 36th Annual National Night Out, which is a unique nationwide crime, substance abuse, and violence prevention program on Tuesday, August 6th, 2019. And let me tell you, if you haven't been to a National Night Out, you're missing something very special in our community. Whereas this is the 17th year that Carson City's, that the Carson City Sheriff's Office will be joining the National Association of Town Watch and other cities across America to address crime prevention in order to improve the local equality of life for all citizens, children, and businesses. And whereas the theme of Carson City's National Night Out is, quote, "Standing with the Blue," to celebrate law enforcement, public safety officers, and law-abiding citizens who stand together daily to shoulder to create a safe community, reducing crime, substance abuse, and violence. And whereas the Carson City Sheriff's Office recognizes that prevention of crime includes the treatment of mental health as a direct investment into people of all ages. And whereas Carson City's, the Carson City Sheriff's Office knows that the unique spirit of cooperation and camaraderie shared with our local citizens and businesses is essential for the successful crime and safety prevention efforts. And whereas Carson City honors all its, all law enforcement, public safety, military, mental health, local businesses, and law-abiding citizens who daily stand with the blue at a National Night Out as a culmination of the many efforts made by all throughout the year to make Carson City a great place to live. And whereas, could the Carson City Sheriff's Office is calling on all citizens to participate in National Night Out and actively learn how to prevent crime, drugs, and violence. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowe, Mayor of Carson City, do hereby proudly, and I mean proudly, proclaim August 2019 Law Enforcement and Public Safety Crime Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to, quote, "stand with the blue" and participate in the scheduled activities to work toward a crime, drug, and violence-free community in our very own Carson City. On behalf of all of us, I want to say thanks to our, all our law enforcement officers and our public safety folks for doing what you do every, every day. As I mentioned, if you haven't been to a National Night Out, you should go because they're really something special. So, I know the boss is here, Lisa Davis is here. So Lisa, let me give this to you. Who else to have a few words? You?
I would just like to thank you and the board. You know, National Night Out is really, truly unique here in Carson City, where we bring everybody, virtually everybody that we can think of, and our local businesses, all of our public safety entities throughout the community. We really hoped for that ladder truck this year, but it's... Next year, folks, next year, ladder truck. And I do want to say this upfront, I appreciate all of the sponsors that come together and make this thing happen. It is truly a great event, a super opportunity for the children to get out and actually meet some of the heroes and mentors that we see in the community every day. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words. We appreciate it. And we appreciate the support, again, for our sponsors. I also want to mention, I forget the, what is it? It's Parks and Rec, we have maintenance, we have, let's see, what's, what are they called?
Open space?
No. Well, my, my, just, Public Works, Public Works. Every time I, thank you very, very much, because my mind just went blank. Public Works, they all work behind the scenes to help us. And last year, I called them Parks and Rec, so I wanted to correct that. And I have a good sense of humor, I can laugh at myself. I also want to say that we, as a nation, we put a lot of emphasis on the people that make bad choices. This year, by standing with the blue, we are emphasizing all of us that are making good choices every day, our heroes, as well as our citizens, because we're standing shoulder to shoulder against crime and, and to make our community a great place. And so I just wanted to make sure that the community sees that and hears the purpose behind that, the new theme. Thank you so much.
Well said, Lisa. Well said, well said. Okay, let's go get a picture up here. Karen, who's going to do the Parks, Carson City Fair this morning? Come on up, come on. How are you folks this morning? Come on up, in the middle. Come on, get in the middle. Oh, look at this. All right. Got lots of future bosses here. Come on, let's get up here. Okay, let's go in the middle. Can we go on TV and say everything else here? All right. Get everybody, because, you know, they don't want to see me, they want to see you folks on TV. Okay, this is a proclamation for the Carson City Fair, July 26th through the 28th, 2019. It reads as follows. Whereas the Carson City Fair, located at the Fuji Park, the Fuji Park and Fairgrounds, celebrates youth, adults, and agriculture in the Carson City area community while providing a fun, family-friendly, and affordable event. Boy, does it. Whereas the foundation of a fair is education, celebration, and tradition. The Carson City Fair celebrates youth, animal husbandry, home economics, arts, and culture, music, entertainment, patriotism, organizations, community, local industry, education, history, and antiques. And whereas a dedicated group of volunteers and organizations have freely given thousands of hours to plan and prepare to make the Carson City Fair the best it can be. And whereas during the four days of the 2018 Carson City Fair, nearly 100, 100 volunteers joined together to produce this wonderful community event, which was attended by over 12,000 visitors. Whereas the continued support of the Carson City Fair will exemplify a true county fair, as well as help the community and economy grow in our great area here. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowe, Mayor of Carson City, do hereby proclaim the week of July 26th through the 28th, 2019, Carson City Fair Week, and encourage all citizens to have a good time and participate in the fair. It's like the National Night Out. If you haven't been out there, you'll see some great things. My own view, you know, on these fairs, is that they bring you back to what's important in this world, and that is, you know, how do we, how do we live off the land? How do we live? You know, go back, go back to basics. And, you know, these folks live, they're the future leaders of our community and they do a heck of a job. So, anyway, let me stop there. Who left, who, okay, here you go.
My name is Kara Strausser, and this is my daughter Kelly.
I'm Chelsea Simerson, and these are my sons, Derek and Connor. And we just want to thank the Board of Supervisors and everyone else in Carson City who have helped make this our third year, the Carson City, this is our fourth year, of the Carson City Fair. We've got a lot of new things coming this year. Come out for the Demolition Derby Friday and Saturday nights. It's a nonprofit, and all the proceeds are going to go back to helping the fair and the local kids in 4-H, FFA, and Grange.
And we have over 140 large livestock animals. We don't have the carnival this year, but we have an American Ninja Farmer. We're going to have Jenga and games that families can just play. It's all free, except for the demo derby. We have vendors. There's just a lot of activities going on. We have jello eating contests. If you have, if you do art or paint, or you make jams, jellies, a pie, you can enter it to win a ribbon. We have a coloring contest for the kids. There's chalk contests. We have the old tractors. So there's a lot of things going on. So come out, enter one of the exhibits, be an American Ninja Farmer, and maybe you can win a ribbon or tickets to the demo derby. We have a honey tasting from our local honey group, and you can pick your best honey taste when you like the best. So it should be a lot of fun.
It'll be a lot of fun, you know. And it's, we say it's free. I mean, I don't think it's free because we're all putting time in, you can put time in, but it is, there's no gate entrance. And it's really something to go and enjoy and have fun. And, you know, look at what, you know, the history of how the country was built, how, you know, how we'd live off the land, you know, what the value of animal husbandry is and things of that nature. It's really important. So let's make some money and have some good time. All right. I don't know if you heard that, but Supervisor Bonkowski says he wants to judge the pie eating contest. Supervisor Barrett over there wanted to judge the hot dog, the jello. Anyway, let's get a picture, folks, okay? I'd like to offer and hand out and deliver a longevity award for people who have, or employees who have done a wonderful job throughout the year to make Carson City a better place to live, work, and play. I would like to present this certificate to Tommy Fletcher, who's a Sheriff's Support Specialist. Tommy, come on up. This is in recognition and appreciation of five years of a continuous dedication to service for Carson City. Thank you, Tommy, for what you do. And I know you guys are always on the front line, no matter where you are. So on behalf of a grateful community, please accept this longevity award, and we look forward to many more years. There you go. Want to say anything?
No.
Come on up here.
She gets a picture all by herself?
You want to be in it, too?
No, thank you.
I think so. We're going to do, let's, we can all go back up there now, yeah, go back up there. Then we'll do Parks. Who's going to, where's, Leanne, are you going to be up here with us here? Dan, all the Parks folks, come on up. Let's go, let's go in the middle here so we can, then I'll turn it over to you guys. We got a lot of room here. We got everybody? Oh, good, okay. Come on, kids. You know, sometimes if you think you're having a bad day, take a look at the smile on some of these kids' faces. That'll make your day. You know, things will be all right when you look at that. It's a big, it's a big boost. That smile, see? Eric, how are you? Eric the Great? All right, this is a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Carson City. And whereas Carson City's Parks Recreation Open Space Department strives to provide residents and visitors alike with exceptional facilities and recreational opportunities while preserving our region's valuable natural history, natural historical and cultural resources. And whereas Carson City's parks, trails, and open spaces are vitally important to the quality of life in our community, encouraging healthy lifestyles for all Carson City citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our region. And whereas Carson City has developed more parks per capita than the national average, let me read that again. Carson City has developed more parks per capita than the national average. The city's park system consists of over 8,000 acres, allowing for recreation, recreational opportunities that help build a healthy, active community which aids in the prevention of chronic disease, provides therapeutic recreation services for individuals of all abilities, and improves the mental and emotional health of its citizens. And whereas Carson City's premier park facilities enhance the community's economic vitality by increasing property values while promoting tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Carson City's parks and natural areas are fundamental to environmental stewardship by improving water quality, protecting groundwater, preventing flooding, improving the quality of air, the quality of air we breathe, providing natural buffers to development, and preserving habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural areas ensure the ecological beauty of Carson City and provide a place to connect with nature and recreate with outdoors. And whereas the United States House of Representatives and the National Recreation and Parks Association have designated July as Parks and Recreation Month and called upon communities throughout the country to recognize the importance of Parks and Recreation. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowe, Mayor of Carson City, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and our entire community, do hereby proclaim July 2019 as Parks and Recreation Month in our, in our community. And we urge all residents to spend time with their family and friends, enjoying their favorite parks and trails, participating in their favorite sports, or just relaxing outdoors and enjoying the beautiful, beautiful region we call home here today. And if you walk outside and take a look at those mountains up there, you'll see exactly what we're talking about. It's a beautiful day in Carson City. So, who should get this? Dan? Oh, okay, here we go. All right. All right, listen, who wants to say a few words?
I guess I'm the designated one. I just want to take the opportunity to, one, thank the board and thank the mayor for all their support and, and also the other departments in the, like the city as well. You know, we couldn't do, like, some of the other things that we do without their support. And then I would also like to thank, like, the staff, the staff that's here, and this staff that's actually out in the field, like, right now. Would like to thank them for all of their hard work. We have a lot of dedicated employees who, like, work hard and appreciate what they do. And I know that when they walk out the door, that they, like, appreciate everybody who's using the facilities and who are out there recreating in all of our open spaces and all of our parks. So, and thank, thank you guys for being part of the program as well, and thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dan, because he's going to talk about the people who have, in addition to our city folks, to our volunteers that have helped make Carson City a better place by their hard work, volunteers, volunteering time, as well as their hard-earned money. So, do you want to go?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as part of National Parks and Recreation Month, we just want to take a couple of minutes to thank all of the community supporters that we've had this past year in helping us to do what we, what we try to do. And so a lot of it comes down to, we, we as a department can't do everything alone with just our staff or the budget that we have. So we depend a lot on volunteers and a lot on donors and sponsors for a lot of our events. And so we just want to thank those groups and individuals who have supported us in 2018. And obviously, there's so many, we couldn't have everybody come here. We wouldn't take the whole meeting if we did. So there's a lot of volunteers, Eagle Scouts, groups that work on trails that we can't necessarily recognize in this, but we want to make sure that they're thanked as well. So the groups that are going to be receiving recognition today are those who have donated at least $100 or more to different, either to our parks or to events and different things like that. So what I'll do is we'll call out the name. If you want to come up here, we'll give you a certificate, and then you can just stay up here, and then we'll get a picture of everybody when it's all done. So Aubrey Robards. Do you want to come right over here? Perfect. Capital Glass. The Carson City Chamber of Commerce. And this is for the fundraiser that they put on in the theater. It got us $20,000 to make improvements in the theater lobby. My apologies. The Carson City Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class of 2019. They worked on the Bee Habitat or the Bee Hotel property right after we became Bee City. So it's kind of a great project that they were able to accomplish. Carson City Home Depot. Home Depot donated over $12,000 in supplies and labor to help out with the Lone Mountain Cemetery. Thank you. Carson Tahoe Health. Thank you for sponsoring our ski program. Carson City Toyota.
Vern, everybody okay back there in the corner?
Except for Vern.
Except for Vern. All right, we'll take up now the consent agenda again, another ask, anybody from the public want to have anything pulled from the consent agenda for individual discussion? Any members of the board? I don't see any, so we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried, unanimous. Thank you very much. Let's now take up the first item on the master agenda. This is for possible, with the sheriff, this is possible to action, discussion of possible action regarding a proposed amendment to the Carson City Boards, Committees, and Commissions' policies and procedures manuals relating to criteria for appointment to a city board, committee, or commission. Ken, thanks for bringing this up, and.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, for the record, Sheriff for long. This is, we're coming back to you, I guess you would call this a second time, to, for, for a change, if you will, or clarification on board committees and commissions policies and procedures. I do ask for the assistance of Dan Yu over here, he's the expert in the matter, so I'll kind of toss it over to you, Dan.
You know, I guess I'll just quickly go over these new provisions. We last came to the board in March with a proposed revision to these BCC conflicts language. We had received some additional instruction from this board to go back and insert some additional language, remove some language that was existing in the manual, and then also to provide some additional clarification. So you'll see in the supporting material, in the last page, this is what's titled, is the new proposed revision. Right before that, on page three, that sort of outlines the different components of the motion that this board took at its last meeting instructing us to revise it in this manner. What I really wanted to point out was, the very first provision in there denoted as subsection one. This speaks directly to the board's action, which was to make sure that, and I think to use Supervisor Jomie's, you know, phrasing of that concept, to make sure that an employee within a department was not going to be appointed to, you know, a board of that same committee, or that same department. So that would, you know, circumvent that sort of a conflict. You know, of course, as we know, you know, departments throughout the city, they don't establish or create their own boards or committees or commissions. You know, that's a matter of semantics, but operationally, it comes to the board, it's the board's authority to create those types of public bodies. So I wanted to finesse that language a little bit, make it as broad as possible, it'll cover every circumstance, but also narrow enough in scope. It's supposed to provide sort of a rubber band effect where it'll cover as many circumstances as possible on both sides, and in other words, I was trying to make it elastic. So the language I used here was, you know, a city employee can't be appointed to any board, committee, or commission that governs matters over which one department of the city has exclusive or primary jurisdiction with regard to related day-to-day operational authority, duties, and obligations if the employee works in that department. So the way that would function, just to sort of illustrate this by way of example, if you are an assistant city planner, then you are prohibited by, you know, this revised language to be appointed to, for example, HRC or the Planning Commission. You're, you're within, you're an employee of that department that has primary or exclusive jurisdictional authority over day-to-day operations related to what the Planning Commission would do as a public body. On the other hand, I wanted to be specific with my wording of one department of the city, and then also the term exclusive or primary jurisdiction with regard to day-to-day related operational authority. So let's take, on the other hand, conversely, the 911 Surcharge Committee. That's comprised of multiple departments, primarily, I would say, the sheriff's office and also the fire department, but that's the composition where you're not confined to just one specific department of the city that has primary or exclusive jurisdiction. So in that case, it would, you know, it would be beneficial to the purpose and intent of that body, but then also, in accordance with this language, you could have, for example, an employee of the sheriff's office or employee of the fire department be appointed to that surcharge committee. So I think the language is written in such a way where, again, it's broad enough in scope to cover every circumstance, but also narrow enough to, I think, carry out the intent of the board's message pursuant to our last meeting here. The rest of this language, it's, it's pretty straightforward, it's just in accordance with the motion that was made. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions to Dan, board? Any public comment on this issue? Board, just like, take it up on, we're comfortable with what Dan's written here? Everybody got motions in order?
I move to approve the proposed amendment as presented.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, hearing, and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried, unanimous. Okay, let's now take up the next item, which is shifting, we'll re now recess as the Board of Supervisors, I'll turn the gavel over to Lori as the Chair of Redevelopment, so we'll be in temporary recess here on the board, and we'll go to the redevelopment authority.
So I call to order the redevelopment authority, and please let the record reflect that all members are present. We'll move on to, is there any public comment for the redevelopment authority? Then we'll move on to item 17, which is approval of our minutes of June 6th. Does anyone have any corrections or changes? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority for June 6th, 2019, as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of June 6th, 2019. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to item 18A, which is the possible action regarding the appointment of a member. She's here, hi. So this is to fill the business operator or property owner from redevelopment area number one, to fill the partial term. So what we do normally is we just go through and ask questions, and usually, as the chair, I'll just start with, what's the most exciting thing you can think about serving on this committee?
I think just the process of where the city has come in the last 10 years.
I'm sorry, one thing, may I just have you identify yourself for the record, so it's... Yeah, I know, but, thank you. Thank you.
I think the process of how exciting it is where Carson City has come in the last six or eight years is quite exciting.
Do we just want to start down with Stacy?
No.
Oh, you don't want to start with you, why don't you start with John? He's like, I'm not ready.
I didn't have a question.
Want to go the other way?
Sure, if John has a question, I'll defer.
We'll start with John and go the other way.
Fine, thank you. Katie, I'm a member up here who sits on the RAC, Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee, and one of the issues that I've been harping on a bit is making the downtown clean, and now that we have about 12 million poured into it, we ought to keep it clean, and I wonder if you have any suggestions on how we can do that. We already, of course, as you probably know, have the NID, and the city throws in some, and it usually costs money, but if there are other ideas, I'm sure open to them, because although I love money, I don't want to spend it unless I have to.
What about maybe organizing some of the local, you know, groups in Carson City to help the cleanup? Maybe some of the different communities with the youth, and those avenues might be, might be a good chance.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, I've known Katie for a long time, and Katie, I want to thank you for all your participation in the community over the years. I could ask you, what's your, what, what, what project do you have first and foremost on your front burner, or whatever, but, you know, if you want to talk a little...
Nothing specific, but I'm just glad to be here, it's kind of nice to maybe be a volunteer to do something like this.
Very good.
Thank you.
Morning, Katie.
Good morning, Brad.
I guess, could you talk to us a little bit about, I don't know, how in-depth you've looked at the actions of the RAC in, in the past few years, and some of the projects that they've worked on, such as the facade improvement program, we've looked at monument signs, a lot of different issues that they've looked at. Can you give us your idea on what your vision is for how the downtown core should look? Obviously, we put a lot of money into it now. How do we sustain that, and where do you see it going in the future?
Good question, Brad. I think, again, like I said, the progress has just been unbelievable. I mean, there was, you know, when the market was doing so poorly, it was really embarrassing to drive through our town. I mean, it was just, it was just horrible. And now, it's just, I mean, it's so gorgeous, it's so green, there's so many projects, we can all have a lot of pride in what has taken place. Going forward, I think it's just a continuance, I think it's involving the community and keeping the excitement building of what we've started with, and just try to build that synergy.
Thanks, Katie.
Welcome.
Katie, thank you for volunteering, appreciate your dedication. You know, one of the charges of, as you know, the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee is to make recommendations on special event funding, so I'd like to know what you think in terms of special events we aren't doing that we should be doing.
What aren't we doing? I don't know that I have an answer for that. We always don't want to wear out our welcome with the ones that we've used so much in the past, we want to broaden that, so, you know, be some brainstorming of who we haven't used before, and maybe search that out, but I don't know, I don't have an answer for that right off the top of my head. Yeah.
Do you just have any closing comments that you want to make, or?
No, just, I mean, personal about me, I've been here for 35 years, and I'm a Realtor, and so I have a tremendous amount of out-of-state clients that come in, I pay attention to what they like and what they're seeing and why they're wanting to relocate here, and it's a continual comment just about the community, and, you know, the energy and the involvement and the youth programs and those kind of things. So it's just fun to have an ear to outsiders, what they think of what we've accomplished over time.
Thank you so much for applying, we really appreciate it. Okay, does anybody, any other, we're ready for a motion? Brad?
I move to appoint Katie Baden to fill the vacancy for a partial term expiring in January 2020.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Katie Baden to fill the vacancy, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, welcome. Get to work. Yeah, it's like an immediate thing, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Katie.
Okay, do I have any final public comment for anyone for the redevelopment authority? Okay, then I'll close this, adjourn the redevelopment authority, and pass the gavel back to the mayor for the board.
Okay. All right, we're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order, we're going to reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. We'll now take up item number 22, this is a public works item, and this is discussion of possible action regarding a proposed resolution accepting the dedication of right-of-way from APN 00985401, also known as Bonnie Place, as offered on the final map of the Jackson Village Plan Unit Development, recorded map, recorded as document number 493943, map number 2963 on April 23rd, 2019. Stephanie, you doing this? Does this cost us any money, or is this what it is?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager, for the record. So we won't, there won't be cost associated with accepting of the right-of-way. Back in 2015, when this particular project came forward to the Board of Supervisors, the intent at that time was that these roads would be public, and the plan was approved as such. The final map came in, in May of 2018, it was found to be in substantial compliance, and so the final map actually recorded in April of this year. However, there is a requirement that the offer of dedication be accepted through a separate document. So the property itself, there's no cost to the city to accept that, of course, there's always maintenance associated with additional roadway.
Go ahead, Brad, done for Stacy.
Stephanie, have they broken ground yet?
They have, they, in fact, my understanding is the road is almost completely constructed, there's a few little punch items left on the list, but we do have a bond for it, so we feel that anything remaining, we would have adequate money to cover if there was an issue upon completion.
So the drainage issues with the project have been resolved?
I'm not that familiar with the project to know.
I don't see anybody from planning here. All right. And then, I had asked you a question about, when you look at the map, it looks like there's an interior road, but you said that that's open space and path, walking paths?
That's correct. So there's a T in the center of the subdivision, and there's a small portion at the southern part of that, that will be a little bit of access in to the units there, but then the remainder of it is walking path and landscape for the interior of the development.
Okay, thank you.
Stacy?
You know, I just, I know that this decision was made quite a while ago, but I just question, and I don't think we can do anything about it now, but in a subdivision like this, where it's completely self-contained, where there aren't residents driving through a neighborhood like this, I just question why it should be a public road, and why we should accept responsibility for maintenance of a road that really isn't for the general public. I mean, it, I think in some instances, as in the case of the next one...
relocate here, and it's a continual comment just about the community and, you know, the energy and the involvement and the youth programs and those kind of things. So it's just fun to have an ear to outsiders, what they think of what we've accomplished over time.
Thank you so much for applying. We really appreciate it. Okay, does anybody, any other, we're ready for a motion? Brad?
I move to appoint Katie Bodden to fill the vacancy for a partial term expiring in January, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Katie Bodden to fill the vacancy. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, welcome. Get to work. Yeah, it's like an immediate thing. Thank you so much.
All right.
Okay, do I have any final public comment for anyone for the redevelopment authority? Okay, then I'll close this, adjourn the redevelopment authority and pass the gavel back to the mayor for the board.
All right, we're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We're going to reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. We'll now take up item number twenty-two. This is a Public Works item, and this is a discussion of possible action regarding a proposed resolution accepting the dedication of right-of-way from APN zero zero nine eight five four zero one, also known as Bonnie Place, as offered on the final map of the Jackson Village Plan Unit Development recorded map, recorded as document number four nine three nine four three, map number two nine six three on April twentieth-third, two thousand and nineteen. Stephanie, you doing this? Does this cost us any money or is this what is this?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Stephanie Hicks, real property manager, for the record. So we won't, there won't be cost associated with accepting of the right-of-way. Back in two thousand and fifteen, when this particular project came forward to the Board of Supervisors, the intent at that time was that these roads would be public, and the plan was approved as such. The final map came in in May of two thousand and eighteen. It was found to be in substantial compliance, and so the final map actually recorded in April of this year. However, there is a requirement that the offer of dedication be accepted through a separate document. So the property itself, there's no cost to the city to accept that. Of course, there's always maintenance associated with additional roadway.
Go ahead, Brad. Done for Stacy.
Stephanie, have they broken ground yet?
They have, they, in fact, my understanding is the road is almost completely constructed. There's a few little punch items left on the list, but we do have a bond for it, so we feel that anything remaining, we would have adequate money to cover if there was an issue upon completion.
So the drainage issues with the project have been resolved?
I'm not that familiar with the project to know.
I don't see anybody from planning here. All right. And then I had asked you a question about, when you look at the map, it looks like there's an interior road, but you said that that's open space and path, walking paths?
That's correct. So there's a T in the center of the subdivision, and there's a small portion at the southern part of that that will be a little bit of access into the units there, but then the remainder of it is walking path and landscape for the interior of the development.
Okay, thank you.
Stacy?
You know, I just, I know that this decision was made quite a while ago, but I just question, and I don't think we can do anything about it now, but in a subdivision like this where it's completely self-contained, where there aren't residents driving through a neighborhood like this, I just question why it should be a public road and why we should accept responsibility for maintenance of a road that really isn't for the general public. I mean, it, I think in some instances, as in the case of the next one, there's certainly instances where the general public will be driving through and using that road, and I think, you know, I can understand that a little more in this case. It just, it seems like it should be a private street to me. And with where we are in terms of our costs for road maintenance, I think at some point we have to start thinking about how we accept and if we continue to accept dedication of roads. I don't know what the answer is. We're not going to solve it on this, but I just wanted to put that on the record because I think it's a discussion that we need to have.
You raise a good point. You raise a good point, and I think we're all taking a look at, you know, as we grow faster and faster, it's important that we hold people's feet to the fire on some of these things. In the past, you know, we really kind of hadn't because there's no, nothing was going on, and so this is kind of a holdover from those days, but Stacy, I tend to agree with you, but...
And I don't, I don't want to pull a bait and switch because I think, you know, the city would be remiss if we didn't accept this road and the subsequent one because at the time of the development, it was very clear that that was going to happen, but if, and we've got a lot of others out there, but before we get too far down that path, and we may be too far down it already, we, I think we really need to think about having a policy discussion on whether we accept roads in the future until we have a funding source to maintain them. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Brad, then Lori. Was that Lori or John?
To follow up on Stacy's question, what are the ramifications if we did not accept the dedication?
Honestly, I think that that is a, we have to accept it from a separate instrument. It is an option. They, you know, at that point would have to figure out how they would maintain them. I don't know from a legal perspective if there's an issue since the plan did go forward as approved with the idea that they would become public roads, but we have seen other areas where some things happened along the way through development, and we chose not to dedicate that at the, or accept the dedication at the end of the day. But it certainly would be something that the developer would then have to maintain and maybe become part of the homeowners association.
Here comes the boss.
Darren Schultz, Public Works, for the record. We have a neighboring county that does this very action pretty consistently. The problem is until you have some policies in place regulating the developer or the owner of the property, it just becomes no man's land. The roads become no man's land, and they don't take care of them, and the city doesn't own them or take care of them, and there it is, and there it remains. So if we want to go down this road and have this discussion, we have to, we would have to establish some policies upfront, instructing and enforcing the developer that they will, they will, they will be the owner of the roads and that they will have to maintain the roads to a certain standard, and whether the developer does that or forms an HOA and turns it over to the HOA, it wouldn't matter to us, but we would have to put something in there in the agreement upfront to make sure that they're taken care of. Otherwise, they just float out there forever, and then developers get unique in that they'll, they'll form a separate LLC for each development project, and then as soon as the project is done, they dissolve the LLC. So again, the roads, there's no owner, so I don't think we should do anything on this particular one, but if this is a discussion we want to have going forward with the planning department, we certainly can have that, but we would need to put some upfront stuff in place.
Thanks for getting that on the record, and my suggestion is we have the upcoming master plan update, and I've asked for an agenda item to come forward where we discuss what we want that to look like, because I don't, I personally don't believe we need a full master plan update. There's just some areas of town that we need to focus on, and we've also had some meetings and talked about some policy guidelines for, say, pro-rata share of future improvements for traffic. Also, we've had discussions on conforming traffic studies. So I think that maybe we can incorporate all of this into a single item in the very near future where we can kind of codify some of these discussions that we've been having on policies and maybe move some of these things forward to address, you know, Stacy's point, which is, I think is a very good point. Why would we accept the city's streets in a, in a isolated neighborhood where there's no through access? And also, you know, I want to make sure that if, if a developer's going to create a traffic impact to an intersection and improvements are going to be required, the city shouldn't be the one that's on the hook for a hundred percent of that cost, so we need to codify the policy that we project the cost of those improvements, and we charge that back to the developer for their pro-rata share of the traffic impacts. So there's a lot of these items that we need to clean up so that we don't have, you know, another situation like we now have down in the southwest part of town. So Nancy, if we could try to make that a priority and get something here to the board in the near future so that we don't miss, with all the development going on, I don't want to miss opportunities that are coming up.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Stacy and Brad and Public Works, Darren, for discussing this fully. I recall that Lori's predecessor used to talk about, well, what are we going to do? Leave some of these roads at the fringes, go to gravel or whatever? And it's just, as everyone knows, our hope on the road's problem on maintenance, and everybody up here is concerned about it, obviously. So thank you for talking about doing it in a method that makes sense and referencing a master plan, because that's a way to bring the community in, and I hope we can tackle this.
I'm sure we can. Stephanie?
I just wanted to add one thing based on Supervisor Bonkowski's question about the drainage. When these come to me, they do come to me through planning, so when planning's ready for me to move forward with the dedication, they actually defer or refer these to me. So I know it's an assumption, but these did come from Hope, so I would assume that everything that she needed to have taken care of was completed before it was brought to me.
You know, it occurs to me that exhibit eight of the discussion we're having is Mallory Way, where it is a disaster, and you know, I don't, I kind of have an idea of the history there, but what Mr. Schultz was saying about, you know, these things just hang out there, that's what's going on in that road, and we do need to have some policies to address that, because I think we all up here understand, you know, that the freewheeling days are coming to an end, and we need to look down the road so that we don't get another road like we got there at Mallory. So anyway, all right. Any public comment on this issue? All right, we'll take a motion on this one, and we'll see where we go.
I got it. Resolution number, sorry.
Two thousand and nineteen R nineteen.
Nineteen one nine. I move to adopt resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash R nineteen.
There's a motion and a second? Not so certain how strong the motion and the second was, but you know, it is. Okay. On the motion, discussion?
I just think on discussion, we did make a commitment to a developer, so I don't want to end up with a road that's just, has no ownership because we can't go back and force him to own it, so...
All right. Any further discussion? On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Sounds like a pass. Okay, let's take up item twenty-two Bravo. This is a similar type matter. This is a proposed resolution accepting the dedication of right-of-way of APN zero zero seven six five three zero two, known as a portion of Coombs Canyon Road, North Hornsby Boulevard, Red Leaf Drive, White Hawk Lane, as offered on the final map of Silver Oak Phase twenty-three A. This has the same theory behind it, I think that's what we just discussed. Public comment on this issue? All right, board? Ready? Go ahead.
I move to adopt resolution, do we need public comment?
Anybody, I think I got it, but any more public comment?
Oh, did you? Okay. All right, sorry. I move to adopt resolution number two thousand and nineteen R twenty.
There's a motion and a second, on the motion, discussion, other than what we've had already? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, all right. Let's take up the Marlet issue on twenty-two Charlie. This is discussion of possible action regarding interim local agreement with the state of Nevada for the purchase of water by Carson City for the Marlet Lake Water System, and FY fiscal years two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one for a total not to exceed two million, seven hundred thousand dollars. Eddie, you going to do this? Mr. Schultz, you got both of you guys there?
Yes, I will.
Where's Todd Reese today?
I believe he's on vacation.
Well, go tell him that you got the brains at the table now, so I'm kidding you.
Thanks. Eddie Qualer for the record, water utility manager, Public Works. And what we have before you is just what you said, a interim agreement, two years, starting fiscal year twenty, which we're in, and then fiscal year twenty-one, and we see this as a interim step towards a final or long-term agreement with the state. It's a, it's a way to get to a long-term agreement, keeping Carson City's interests in check, and then going towards a beneficial contract in the future with the state. So that's what we have in front of you, and we're happy to answer questions.
Any questions, Eddie? Anybody?
Yeah. So maybe comments more than questions. This is an agreement that we've been working on for quite a while, and the mayor may not be happy with me here, but, you know, I kind of want to call the state out on this. I think that we're trying to deal in good faith here, and this is an important agreement to us, to the state, to Washoe County, to Virginia City, Story County, and I just call on the state to, you know, come to the table in good faith so that we can get this agreement done. We've been working on it already for close to five years or maybe more than five years, and I'd like to get this wrapped up, and I feel like we've gotten some pushback, maybe some unnecessary pushback, and so, you know, I'd just like to get this, this taken care of, and so I'm just going to request that the state comes to the table and they deal in good faith so we can wrap this up.
Stacy?
I, I agree with Brad, and I just want to let Public Works know that I appreciate your efforts and that, you know, I think we should be strong as we move forward, and I'm willing to support you in that. And I think, as I discussed with you guys earlier in the week when we met, that I think realistically, this is a two-year agreement, but we've got to get an agreement put to bed before the state builds their twenty, the next biennial budget, because if we don't, then I think the chances of it happening, and I think you're going to be here in two years with another one of these if, if we're not. So anything I can do to help, I will, and thank you.
Any other comments on board? Public comment on this issue? I don't see any. Let me just say, I think that, you know, understanding the comments about the state, I think we're on a new, my own sense is we're on a new page with the state, and so we'll see where that goes. See if we'll be operating. Think we have a clear understanding of where they want to go and where we would need to go and what our end result desires are, so, anyway. Anybody else? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to accept it to your agreement.
I move to approve the water agreement with the state of Nevada as presented.
There's a motion, was there a second? I didn't. Okay. Motion and a second, on the motion, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Carrie, thank you, Eddie. Say hello to Todd. Okay, all right, we on to the next one then? Lost Lakes Water Lease Agreement? Twenty-two Delta? Okay, go. This is discussion of possible action regarding a one-year Lost Lakes Water Lease Agreement between Carson City and the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District for an amount not to exceed six thousand, one hundred dollars. Who's doing it? Both of you are going to do it?
Again, Eddie Qualer for the record, Public Works. So this is an agreement between us and Carson Water Sub Conservancy District. We've had this agreement in place in the past. We haven't had it in the last couple of years due to just not needing it or not forecasting to need it. Last year, we, we used those wells so much, we probably could have used it in the last couple of months of using the wells. But, so this year, I approached Ed to want to use this or establish this agreement again. The nice thing about it is we don't pay for it if we don't use the water, so it's kind of a hedge to our demands. It's fairly cheap, and the only thing different this time around is Ed requested that we pay the six hundred dollars to the state engineer's office for the permitting fees for the temporary application. So that's the only change from past agreements.
Okay. He just walked in, by the way, so...
Oh.
Okay. Public comment on this issue? Board, where we are in this was. Okay with this?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement as proposed.
There's a motion and a second, on the motion, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Carrie? Okay. Let's, thank you both. Thank you, Ed.
Just in time.
Got it here, just in time. That's how you pass, that's how you pass something, it is come in. All right. Let's take up, if we want to take a break, you let me know, but we'll try and get through the agenda here. Let's, okay, let's take twenty-three Alpha. This is Health and Human Services Department joiner contract. Nikki? Carol, you want to tell us where we are and whether there's a budget? Give us a top line, then we'll ask Nikki.
Sure, no problem. Carol Akers, purchasing and contracts. And this is for the discussion and possible action regarding the purchase of various vaccinations for the Health and Human Services Department through joiner contracts with Glasgow Smith Klein through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, and Sanofi Pastor, Inc., through December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, for a total not to exceed amount of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and two dollars. This is also to request authorization to extend. I have heard from, back from them, they are in the works of doing the amendments for the renewals to extend the contracts.
Nikki, what are we doing?
So for the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. So this is to purchase vaccine for our clinic, the school-located vaccine program where we go into the schools and vaccinate children for influenza, and seems like we just got done with that, but we're starting again the end of September, and for any of our community vaccination programs where we go out into the community and again vaccinate for influenza, and with these vaccinations, we do bill.
Board, any questions? Anybody? Motion's in order. Let me ask, public comment on this issue? Anybody? I didn't mean to overlook that. Who do want to weigh in? I don't see any. Okay, motion's now in order.
I move to approve the joiner contract with GlaxoSmithKline through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and Sanofi Pastor, Inc., through December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and authorize the purchasing and contracts administrator to extend the Sanofi Pastor, Inc. joiner contract when the underlying contract renews if the terms do not change.
There's a motion and there's a second, on the motion, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Carrie? Okay.
Thank you.
That's, thank you very much. You want to stay for the fuel one, too? All right. All right. Where are we then? Let's see. I'm just going to do this one. Zach? Good morning to you. How are you doing? Top line for the record, Carol?
Absolutely. Carol Akers, purchasing contracts. This is discussion and possible action regarding contract nineteen twenty dash zero six zero, a joiner contract with Interstate Oil Company, Carson Valley Oil Company, Flyers Energy LLC through the state of Nevada's contract number three zero six four for bulk fuel and delivery services, and also with Thomas Petroleum LLC through the state of Nevada's contract three one two five for the Cardlock Fuel Network for an amount not to exceed one million, fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-four from various city fuel accounts for fiscal years two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty. This is also, has one that's going to be expiring, I think in December or September, so they are working on the renewal on that one as well.
This is something we do generally annually, anyway?
Yes.
Okay. Public comment? Board? Motion's in order.
I do, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Zach, I didn't, I didn't see it in here, and I don't recall it being in here, but do we still have an agreement for provisions of emergency fuel in the event that there's long-term power outages or... We used to have provision with a vendor that we could access their fuel storage through various means, and I didn't see anything like that in here, but are you aware of that? Maybe that's a question for the, well, go ahead.
Yes, actually, we are aware of it. It has been offered to us through Flyers, and it's continued to be offered to us through Flyers Network.
I just didn't see it in here, but it's, so it's in a separate agreement or it's, it's covered somewhere?
Yeah, it's covered somewhere, and it's particularly the Flyers out, fuel station that's up there just above Deer Run.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Questions of this panel? I don't see any motions in order. So, as Bonkowski...
I move to approve contract 3064 Bulk Fuel and Delivery Services through January 31, 2020, and contract 3125 Cardlock Fueling Network through September 30, 2019, and authorize the purchasing and contracts administrator to extend the joiner contracts if the terms of the underlying contracts do not change when the state renews them.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Okay, we'll now move to item number 24, and we're going to open a public hearing that's under 24 Alpha. We're opening a public hearing as of this moment. This is to receive a report of the city manager on fiscal impact and recommended approval of the amended collective bargaining agreement between Carson City and the Carson City Sheriff's Supervisory Association on behalf of the Carson City Sheriff's Lieutenants and Captains Association effective July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2024, with an estimated fiscal impact of $386,230 for the term of the agreement. Ms. Paulson, you want to take us through where we are on this?
All right, good morning. So we've completed another successful round of negotiations. This association has a whole three members in it. It's captains Primco, Wall, and Humphrey. I was hoping you'd be able to see those numbers a little better, but they're kind of small up there. So just a little overview of some of the changes to the agreement. So this is the last association that's transitioning from the broadbanding pay system into a step system. So we established six steps with step one starting at $116,408 and ending with step six, which is $136,262. So there's a 3% increase to steps two through four, and then a 3.5% increase for steps five and six. In addition, none of the employees will be able to move to step five until fiscal 22, and step six in fiscal 24. And there's just a few other minor changes. We've increased the maximum allowed annual leave bank that they could accrue at the end of the, each calendar year from 240 hours to 280. And we've increased the body armor allowance from 800 to, per annually to 1,250. And in addition, there's some minor increases in reimbursements for amounts, for personal items that are damaged in the course of their employment. And then we've also, the last thing is, we revised the definition on how holiday pay is calculated due to the different work shifts that the captains work. We just need to clarify that language on how to calculate that. So all of these changes are consistent with the other sheriff's office collective bargaining agreements. And so the estimated fiscal impact is $386,000 for the five-year period. That includes the salary, the purs, and longevity. And there was no, no other impact is included for the provisions of the agreement that we haven't made any changes to. And in our fiscal year 20 budget, we included a 3% increase already. So there just may need to be a budget augmentation in fiscal 20 for about $45,000. And that's just the amount that was needed to move the captains into the step system. And then we also included 3% increases in our five-year projections. So we're not going to see the full impact of the 386,000 because we've already accounted for, you know, a 3% increase over the next five years. And that's all I had on that.
Okay, Suwazia Bronkowski.
And so the changes that you just detailed were to bring this contract in conformance so that it has the same parameters that are being offered as the other bargaining unit contracts that we already have in place. And I believe this is the last group that had, that was kind of outside some of the parameters that we've been putting together for the last six years, basically trying to get conformity across all the bargaining units. For us, for planning, that makes it easier. I think it's fair to, to all of the employees because they know what our policies are, they know what expectations are. So, you know, I'd like to thank the bargaining unit for, for working through this process with us. I think that we reached a place where we need to be. None of us may be happy, 100% happy with it, but I think we're right where we need to be. And moving forward, I think this allows the city to be in a much better place for, for planning purposes going forward with employee contracts. So I'm happy that we finally got in there after all these years.
Additional public comment? Anybody? Okay, then I'm going to ask, again, I don't hear anybody. So we're going to close the public hearing on, on this item, and we're going to take up item 24 Bravo. This is a discussion of possible action on the proposed amendment to collective bargaining unit between Carson City and Carson City Sheriff's Supervisory Association on behalf of the Carson City Sheriff's Lieutenants and Captains Association effective July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2024, with an estimated fiscal impact of $386,230. This is the formal side of the public hearing we just had. So, all right. Want to add it? Mr. Primco, how are you doing this morning?
Doing good, sir, thank you.
Good.
I'll just add that I'll kind of echo the sentiment of Supervisor Bronkowski, that Dan and I talked about it in negotiations, that when you walk away and not everybody's happy, then it's a win. So we didn't, not everybody got what they wanted, but bottom line is that we worked really well together. I was sitting at this table last year when I was a sergeant, and we finished the sergeant's negotiations. And I'll just kind of echo last year, the same sentiment, that everybody that was on the negotiating team from the city, very professional, I think both sides really worked together. Don't always agree, don't always see eye to eye, but at the end of the day, that we know that when we leave that table, that we're all, we all work for the same place, and we may be working together, you know, next week, so we have to have those relationships built. But bottom line, I think it's a, it's a good contract. I think it's good for the city, it's good for the employees in the bargaining unit, and I think it's a win for everyone.
Good. All right, all right. Public comment? Anybody? Sheriff?
Yeah, I'll just chime in just a little bit, because I don't get a lot of chance to do this. I'm very, very proud of the three. This is a small, small group, three captains. They, they really truly are the most experienced, most qualified, most technically trained of all of our officers down at the sheriff's office. They have enormous responsibilities, not only to safety and welfare and the health of their, the employees that work underneath them, but as well as the community, too. They do a tremendous job. I received notations from Sicilia Risk Management how well we did last year, and that's these folks looking over the employees, watching over what they do. We had a, we've, we had a stellar year last year, we're into a great year this year. And that's a great credit to those supervisors that are out there managing those resources and making sure that we do them as efficiently as possible. These are, these are great gentlemen, and I strongly, strongly support them, but more so, I have to echo, yeah, if, if nobody wins, everybody wins. So thank you.
Good. All right, thanks, Sheriff. Anybody else out there? I didn't hear. Oh, Dan, go.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I just wanted to say a couple of things on the record. I think it'd be a disservice for me to, you know, leave out, you know, the fact that, you know, Jim and the team, you know, on the other side, I mean, they were a pleasure to work with. I've been in other negotiations before in the past in different contexts. And, you know, as Jim's alluded to, sometimes, you know, relations can get strained, you know, it can be, you know, sort of a pressure or, you know, boiling pot where, you know, you're yelling at each other, people aren't happy, you walk away, and people are, you know, they're angry. So, so it's, it's been a pleasure working with them. I appreciate the candor that the team brought to the table. I wanted also to thank, you know, the professionalism that they've exhibited. Of course, you know, there are front lines here, you know, for public safety in Carson City. We appreciate the work that they do. And we also appreciate, you know, just the professionalism that they've carried throughout the series of negotiation meetings that we had. You know, staff, I believe, and the negotiation team as a whole is also in support of this contract. I'm happy to answer any questions relating to the red line version of that contract. I did want to mention one thing that is not related to the fiscal matters that Nancy pointed out. One other substantive change to that contract is, we'd included with the agreement of the association, an evergreen clause. Prior to this legislative session back in 2015, the evergreen clauses were essentially prohibited from inclusion in CBAs pursuant to Senate Bill Number 153 that was enacted this last legislative session. Evergreen clauses are allowed to be incorporated into CBAs, and we decided that it would be mutually beneficial to do so, both for the association and, and for the city. But more than that, I also wanted to thank the negotiation team on the city side. Everyone brought their expertise to the table. And of course, we wanted to thank the mayor and the board of supervisors as well for the guidance that you provided to us in our closed sessions.
Very good. Any, any other comments from anybody? Board, we're ready for a motion.
I move to approve the agreement and authorize the district attorney's office to take, to make any necessary revisions that are clerical and not substanti, substantive, well, when finalizing the agreement.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you, thanks to your group. Jim? Okay. All right, we're going to be in recess for about 10 minutes. All right, we're going to be in recess for about 10 minutes. It's 10. Now, we're on possible item 24 Charlie. This is discussion of possible action regarding the appointment of Adriana Frelick. Our deputy city manager is the acting public guardian effective July 18th. That's today until the appointment of a new public guardian by the board of supervisors. Who's going to do this? You?
Good morning, Mayor. Well, we're just here in case you have any questions, but if you don't, then...
Anybody have questions? Public comment on this issue?
And I've got John Giomi, the deputy public guardian here with me in case you have questions.
Everybody know what's going on? Superintendent Giomi, go.
I just, I don't, I wasn't on the board when the last public guardian was hired, but I know this is one of the by-law positions that reports directly to the board of supervisors. And I would just like to talk about how we're selecting the next public guardian. I'd like to see the board have one or two representatives on that search committee since it statutorily reports directly to us. I don't...
Think they do.
I feel like we should. I don't believe we did last time, but I could be wrong. We did?
We did.
Let me just shut up then. Thank you.
No, we did, and we had, I'm sure Adriana or John can fill in because John was under one of the applicants there. But, you know, we had, we had public guardians from Douglas County and Washoe County also helping on the interview process. Laurie and I were on that as well, and I can't remember who else was there but Nancy.
Nancy.
Yeah. But your comments are well taken, though, Stacy, because it is one of the only direct reports to this board here. All right, Superintendent Monkowski.
So Adriana, can you give us some assurances that you have time for this? I know you're busy.
Well, it is a small office, but everybody pulls their weight. It's a big office of three individuals. But John Giomi's been working really hard in kind of getting everything in place. We've got the help of everybody in the office as well as an office manager in the office that has volunteered to help us with the streamlining. And she is creating some policies and procedures, updating the policies and procedures and creating a desk manual for the new guardian so that way when the new guardian comes in, they will have some materials to kind of go by and it'll help streamline that office because, as you can imagine, we all pay our bills and we go to the doctor and do that type of thing, but we're responsible for ourselves. This office of three people are responsible for paying all of the bills, taking care of individuals, taking them to their doctors, their dentist, their hair appointment, what have you, for about 90, 90 individuals. And that's a group of three people. So it's got to be a well-oiled machine. It's got to be streamlined, and that's what we're working on at this, at this point. So to answer your question, a long-winded answer, is I couldn't do it alone. And so, but I think together as a team and with the help of the entire city, we'll be able to do it.
And how long do you anticipate it being to get through the search and interview process for a new permanent public guardian? So I guess the real question is, how long do you anticipate that you'll be in this interim position?
Personally, I don't see it more than one or two months. I think that the scheduling of, is, that's the biggest issue. I foresee putting it out, posting the position for 15 days, doing the interviews for another 15 days, and then having it come to the board for, for your appointment. That's how I foresee it in my head. It may not work out that way, but that's how I look at it.
And this may be a question for you, Nancy. Do you think that you need a board action or board guidance on changing the bank accounts to a single trust?
I don't know. I've actually been working with Buffy with the DA's office, and I don't believe so since it's not, they're not city funds. So we're already in the process of, of changing the bank accounts over.
To, to a single trust?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Just so you know, I support that decision.
Yeah, so, so there's actually a bank accounts at a few different, you know, banking institutions. So we have US Bank and Bank of America. But Bank of America has the largest number of accounts, so that's the one we're working on to do the, it's called a collective account.
And so that change will get incorporated into the revision of the policies and procedures?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions at the board? Public comment on this issue? Anybody? I don't see any. Ready for a motion?
I move to appoint Adriana Frelick, deputy city manager, as the acting public guardian effective July 18, 2019 until the appointment of a new public guardian by the board of supervisors.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed nay, carried. When we set up the search committee, when you do that, take me off. I think rotate around. If a board member wants to be on the interview panel, let the city manager know. Move it around. If you want to be on, it's fine.
Well, I'm only... Yeah, I certainly would consider it. I just don't know with, I mean, John is a distant cousin. I don't know if that creates an issue, so.
He's a distant cousin?
Yes.
From Italy?
There's no resemblance at all.
Well, yes, we are, we are both from Italy. Yes, sir. Yeah. Our names end in vowels. He has a really great last name, by the way.
My goodness. I don't think, frankly, I don't think that has any, I talked with the DA, my own retired lawyer senses, don't worry about it. It's too remote. Unless you're paying him some money. Okay. All right. Do we get a motion on this?
Yep.
Okay. All right, let's take up, that's it? Thank you. Let's take up item 25. This is a possible action discussion, a possible action regarding proposed resolution to transfer Carson City's 2019 private activity bond, bond volume cap to the Nevada Rural Housing Association. We do this routinely unless there's something the board has in the, in the pipeline for development, but we usually give our bond cap to the NRAHA. But Lee, go ahead and tell us what we're doing.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Lee Plamow, community development. Yeah, just a little bit more to touch on that. It's a, it's an allocation of state funds, half of, there's a big pool of money, half of which is allocated to the various jurisdictions throughout the state by population. It's, it provides low-interest financing for eligible projects, which is affordable housing and industrial development. So they're actually not submitting an application. An application for a project such as new housing or redevelopment would have come in early in the year. So no projects came into the state for Carson City. So Nevada Rural Housing Authority is asking for our allocation for their, for their low mortgage assistance program, which, which as you, as you mentioned, we've routinely done in the past. I did want to note, last year when this came up, to do a little bit of research to see if there was any other use that the city could use these funds for and, and honestly, if we, if the city had a housing authority, if we were the housing authority and we're building affordable housing and rehabbing ability, housing, I think we would be very interested in this, but we have, we do not do that. We have the Nevada Rural Housing Authority in Aria, so there, we could do a program like theirs, but they are set up to run this type of program. So we recommend giving this unused Carson City allocation to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority.
Superintendent Monkowski.
So the, we have, we're either coming out with an RFP or already have for the land over on Budai, that piece there, for affordable housing. Is our bonding capacity, could that be a help in any way on that project once the RFP comes back? Or because we don't have a housing authority, would your recommendation be to put them in contact with NRHA and let them use our bonding capacity to help in some way? Or is it just not relevant at all?
No, that, that would be applicable possible funding source for, for any project on that property for the, for the developer, for whoever that ends up being, and they should be in direct contact with the state, I believe, on, on that. Nevada, they can speak about, you know, how they might be involved in that RFP, but, but I think whoever's doing the project, it would be an application and contact with the state to get all the information of how to secure that type of funding and then come to the city to request that you authorize that allocation for the project.
And then if there's any remaining balance under our bonding capacity, then you would be back here to ask for that remaining balance.
If I may, Bill Brewer, Nevada Rural Housing Authority, just to answer your question, typically how that would work is the developer would go to the state with an application for a bond cap. The state requires the developer to go to the community to get a match for that as much as they can. Typically, a project's going to be $10 to $20 million or more, and certainly the state doesn't have enough bond cap to match that, but, but they have some bond cap, and so the state would want you to contribute that, and then the state out of their pot would make up the difference. This is how it would typically work on a, on a bond-financed affordable project.
And I would note that I didn't say the number. The amount that Carson City's allocated in this funding is about 2.9 million.
Any other questions, board? Any public comment, any more on this issue? All right, we'll take a motion to transfer the 2019 bond cap to NHRA.
I move to adopt resolution number 2019-r21.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed nay, carried. Okay. Let's take up item 22, 25 Bravo. This is discussion of possible action regarding a request for a tentative subdivision map to create 103 lot, single-family subdivision, a 103 lot, single-family subdivision within the Lampa Ranch specific plan area and within the Blackstone Ranch specific plan area on property zone, single-family 6,000 and located on the east end of Railroad Drive, APN 01005144. Mr. Sullivan, you want to take us through where we are, what the planning commission did, and what changes have been made since we talked about this last?
Certainly. The applicant seeking to subdivide 26.89 acres to create 103 residential lots. The property is located at the end of Railroad Drive across, access to the subject property is proposed to be from Railroad Drive and from Fifth Street. Trail access is proposed to a future trail on the west side of Highway 395 and to the Linear Park. 100-foot drainage channel is proposed along the north side of the property adjacent to the Linear Park. The street sections will include sidewalks on each side. The property is owned, single-family 6,000, but also subject to the Blackstone specific plan, which the board may remember, I think you saw it three times, and you approved it on September 20th, 2018. When I, when we were reviewing the specific plan, I kept referring to it as the rules of the game. The focus at that time was the transition of the adjacent properties and secondary access. The lots along the western boundary will exceed the 6,000 square foot minimum with the smallest being 600, I'm sorry, the 6,000 square foot minimum with the smallest being 6,600 square feet. The adjacent developed lots are approximately 7,400 square feet, except for the one that's north of Railroad, which is one acre. From a transportation perspective, the applicant is proposing to have secondary access that does not rely on Railroad, specifically extending Railroad as a collector to Fifth Street where it will connect to the Spine Road that's part of the Lampa Ranch North specific plan area. This is consistent with the Lampa Ranch specific plan that was adopted in 2006. I have that on the board. So I'll just mention that when this was going, when things up in Lampa North were going through the specific plan process and tentative maps, it was Commissioner S. Wine was very frustrated. He said, "When are we going to build the roads?" We are at the point where we're starting to see this 2006 specific plan implemented and where staff is really pleased to see the connection go all the way to Fifth. This was reviewed by the school district. The planning commission in particular is very concerned whenever we have residential development on the impact to the school district. The school district expressed a general concern about capacity, but indicated they're hopeful to have a solution in place when the impacts of this development are felt in a few years. They're also grateful that the applicant's not using Firebox for the secondary access. The planning commission in reviewing this had three written correspondences. I'd like to speak specifically to the issues raised in those letters. To summarize the issues raised, one was the adequacy of a road going to Fifth. Secondly, directing construction traffic and fire exiting, noticing, concern that the owner hadn't, had entered into an agreement as required at the time of development permit, concern about the adequacy of the open space and trails, secondary access, the adequacy of the traffic report, a lack of open space, and concern about the treatment of the flood plane, and also concern about the lack of a sound barrier between the houses and the freeway. Again, the board is very aware that in adopting Blackstone's specific plan, policy 3.6.3 specifically required the secondary access, and the project before you includes that secondary access going to Fifth that does not rely on Railroad. The owner of the property to the north has signed the tentative map application. They will not need any agreements until we're at a construction permit level, which we're not there right now. The road extending to Fifth, there was questions about the adequacy of that. That is consistent with our specific plan, and the alignment of this road and shifting it easterly was necessary to meet fire code requirements. A traffic analysis was completed, and based on the impacts anticipated at Railroad and Fifth, the applicant will pay their pro-rata share towards the traffic improvements prior to final map recording. The impacts when determining that number included buildout of the area to the north of Fifth as well as the project. In terms of conditioning construction traffic, there was a lot of talk about that at the time of specific plan, and we've heard about it now. I'm reluctant to condition it, and the reason is I don't want to sign up for a condition of approval that I'm not confident staff can enforce. Enforcing the route of a construction vehicle is difficult, particularly when you're starting out with site work and that secondary access isn't even constructed yet. People use GPS there to get routes. When you have a brand-new road, it's not going to show up. Having said that, should the applicant choose, I'm not suggesting that the city mandate this, to put up a sign saying "Construction Traffic Utilize Fifth" at the appropriate time? I think that could help divert traffic. But again, I just don't see how, how city staff can be responsible for controlling how a vehicle gets to that site when we're talking about a brand-new accessway that will not show up on GPS maps right away. In terms of noticing, the noticing went to 48 property owners within 600 feet. In addition to the mandated notice, I immediately reached out to concerned residents upon receiving the application. So staff did, did do extra outreach on this one, so I know there are concerns that everyone in this area wasn't notified, which is true, but we did do what was required by law as well as a courtesy outreach. In terms of the open space, there is not an open space requirement as part of this map. The applicant's in error... The applicant's in error on page five when he indicates there's an open space requirement, that would be if we had an open space development or a PUD. This is a straight tentative map that's complying with the zoning. Terms of the floodplain, I do have a map of the floodplain. Here, I have posted on the board a map of the floodplain, so you'll see the area closest to the linear ditch is in an A floodplain, whereas the rest is, is the X minimal flood hazard area. There was a question whether or not the applicant had been forthcoming about being in the floodplain, the staff believes that is the case. Policy 3.4.1 of the specific plan states that prior to the recordation of the final map, a conditional letter of map revision must be approved with the design recommendations for the channel to accommodate 100-year flow peaks. Condition of approval 26, which is before you, requires the CLOMAR prior to construction permits to ensure all improvements address the floodplain. So, the staff is, is aware, the applicant's aware, we do have floodplain, and the conditions of approval are crafted to address it. In terms of noise, typically when you look at noise, you look at the source of the noise, and the source of the noise has the obligation to mitigate the noise. In this case, the source of the noise is the freeway. The applicant will be building adjacent to the freeway, and, and I understand the concerns of the residents that it's loud out there, they've been out there, and they live out there. Having said that, I don't find that it's this applicant's responsibility to provide for that mitigation when they're not the source of the noise, and I'm not recommending mitigation. When we did the specific plan, and I mentioned this, we spent a lot of time on it in creating the rules of the game. Because we spent so much time on it, I think we have a good project here. I've reviewed every single applicable policy of the specific plan in the staff report, and I find that this project is consistent with the specific plan. When this went to the planning commission, the planning commission had two primary concerns. One was the wetland area. The, I put up the map of the wetland area. We did not bring this map, nor did we make the delineation report available to the planning commission. It's certainly in the record, but we didn't anticipate that question. Per this map, you'll see there's three aquatic resources. The linear ditch, which is actually a man-made ditch with wetlands on the fringe, a .07 acre pond, and a .27 acre area on the site, which are the aquatic resources per the report. In terms of mitigation, the applicant has already started his consultation with the Army Corps of Engineers, and that's why the 100-foot buffer adjacent to the linear park is proposed, it's proposed to be the mitigation for these wetlands. But you'll see the wetlands are fairly small in size. We didn't have this map available when we met with the planning commission, so the planning commission did recommend an additional condition, which, which I think is fine, that the applicant consult with the Army Corps and incorporate any recommendations or requirements from the Army Corps in their construction plans. We would do that anyway, but there's no downside to having that be a condition of approval. The planning commission was also very concerned about the floodplain. We didn't bring the map of the floodplain to the planning commission, but they really felt that although it could be engineered, it was best to not develop in the floodplain. Stephen Potte from our development engineering team's present, and he'll be prepared to speak to the floodplain issues and to the wetlands to the extent the board would like to hear more specificity on that. So, the planning commission did vote four to two to recommend approval of the tentative map. The two no votes, I believe, were specifically related to the issue of the presence of the floodplain and the presence of wetlands. Staff is recommending, based on input from board members, two modifications to the conditions of approval, and they're really clarifying in nature. Condition 17, we're suggesting a modification, so each sentence that references the asphalt section and the base section also says, or per the geotechnical engineer's recommendation, whichever is greater. And clarification to condition 22, so that the first sentence will read, there's a low spot on Railroad Drive where the existing Railroad Drive connects to the proposed extension of Railroad Drive, and the rest of that, that condition would read the same. There were questions about what was intended with that condition, we realized there was an opportunity for clarification with the first sentence. So, the planning commission again did recommend approval with the additional condition regarding compliance with the Army Corps recommendations and requirements as far as the construction plans. I'm happy to answer any questions, and if the board would like more specificity on the floodplain or Army Corps, Stephen Potte is prepared to speak to that. Thank you.
Just one question to set the table a little bit. Did the traffic analysis show what the traffic impact would be at, at the intersection of Solomon and Railroad? As composed of the traffic impact on Fifth and Railroad, the new proposed Railroad?
So, Solomon.
It would have been, it would have been.
Yeah. Stephen Potte, for the record, yeah, we did require them to analyze the intersection of Solomon and Railroad as well as Fifth and Railroad. That intersection was shown as, as passing both now with the project and in the, the future as far as.
I didn't hear the last, Stephen. Say that again, please.
So, we did have them analyze the intersection of Solomon and Railroad, and that intersection has a passing level of service now with the project and in the future, I believe, 2040 was the year that we had them analyze.
So, what can they expect? What can residents in, in that area expect on increased traffic at that intersection?
So, level of service is based on amount of delay, and I'm just going off of memory. I think they're showing like a level of service C, the applicant might be able to speak better to that, but, and that was 2040, which, if I remember correctly, is about 30 seconds, somewhere in there, delay on average.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just introduce, I, I failed to do this. On behalf of the applicant, Mike Raely, the planner, is present, Lauren Chilson, the traffic engineer, and Jeff House, who will be able to speak to the hydrology. So, I just wanted to let you know the applicant did bring a team of experts.
Supervisor Bunkowski.
First, Hope, going back to the, sorry. First, Hope, going back to the freeway noise and not having a condition to address that for remediation. We had a conversation previously when this came in front of us about a disclosure to the home buyers, and I don't remember the full list of items that needed to be disclosed, but let's make sure that the freeway noise is in that disclosure. That way, the homeowners would be signing off on that, that they're aware of the noise, and at least then they're informed buyers. Then, on condition 19, first, I want to thank Public Works and Lucia for moving forward with the, the requirement that future traffic improvements be analyzed and that we charge back a prorata share of the cost, estimated cost. This is going to be in a 10-year development agreement, is that correct? Okay. Want to say that on the record?
Stephen Potte, yes, that's correct.
Okay. My concern on this is in the past that we've seen these 10-year development agreements, if we go into a recession, then the improvements don't get built within that 10-year timeframe. Going forward, not in this particular case, since we already have it, have an agreement in place, even though it's not yet approved, if we could look at, I, I don't know, we got to think about this, but I prefer not to use 10-year development agreements because they can expire, and we've seen them expire, especially on water and waistline development agreements on the south part of town, and then the city ends up being on the hook for those replacements after the development agreement expires. So, I'd prefer a different method. I'm not clear on what that method might be, or that there actually is a better method, but let's take a look at that. And I think that's all I have for right now, I may have some more later.
Supervisor Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What time was the, were the traffic studies done for those two locations? A time of day?
Lauren Chilson, for the record, with Heatherway Transportation. The traffic counts were conducted during school hours, so in the morning between 7:00 and 9:00 AM, in the afternoon between 2:00 and 3:00 PM, those are the periods that we analyzed.
Thank you. Could you do a fuller report on the wetlands, floodplain part of this for me?
Stephen Potte, again, for the record. So, there's both floodzone and wetland affecting this parcel. If you remember the slide Hope had up earlier, there's a big, I'll wait till she goes that. So, the blue area shown on that slide is a FEMA floodzone. So, that's regulated by FEMA, which is a hazard area, so think insurance and construction requirements to make sure you're not impacting your neighbors with the, the floodwaters. The wetland mitigation is regulated by the Army Corps of Engineers, and that's more focused on plants and animals and protecting those natural resources. So, there, for this project, they'll be required to get two separate FEMA approvals. One is for the road going up to Fifth Street, one is for the subdivision, and then they also have to get approval from the Army Corps. The city has standards for developing in floodzones, which are actually a little more stringent than the federal regulations, so we'll be reviewing, reviewing that portion of it a little more closely. Versus on the wetlands, we don't have any standards, so we'll rely on the Army Corps' review, and then we'll look at their requirements for mitigation when it comes time for the site improvements.
Thank you.
Other board comments, Stacy?
Yeah. So, that, if, if I looked at the stuff that was supplied to us, the 100-foot buffer does not pull all of the lots out of the floodplain, per se, is that accurate statement? I'm trying to find it in the, in the.
I see 32, 32 lots in the floodplain.
Correct. So, the way the floodplain currently sits, basically that first row of houses, if the floodplain was not changed, they would be in there. With the improvements, that 100-foot buffer is their, their mitigation. So, anytime you fill inside a floodzone, you have to cut. So, if you think of like a bathtub that's totally filled, if you put like a big bowling ball in there, it would overflow, right? So, with that analogy, you'd have to take out the same amount of material that you're putting in. So, they're adding fill where those houses are, and then in the 100-foot buffer, they're actually going down to have an even amount of volume.
So, it's almost a compensatory provision of equivalent floodplain.
Correct. And that actually also doubles for their, their wetland mitigation, too.
Relative to that, is, is there, we're, we're doing a freeway noise disclosure, is there a provision to do a floodplain disclosure? I mean, I didn't, I didn't see that in here.
At this point, there's not a condition of approval relative to that. It typically comes up if there's a mortgage involved, however, these may be cash sales, so we can certainly, I, I've crafted language on the disclosure, I'll add to that, that it may be in a floodplain.
Disclosure would say what?
I'm still crafting it as you speak, but I can, it was regarding the noise disclosure.
I got the noise, but I'm worried, I'm concerned about the.
So, to speak to that a little more, they'll be required to do a, a CLOMAR, which is the FEMA process to actually change the map. So, those homes will no longer actually be within the floodzone, the floodzone will, will shift. And the finished floor elevation of those homes will be two feet above the base flood elevation, that's the part of our standards that's more stringent than, than FEMA's. So.
So, those parcels literally, assuming the CLOMAR goes through, which it has to go through, otherwise they cannot build there.
Correct.
Correct? Then, those homes will not be in the floodplain, and there wasn't a need for disclosure.
Correct.
Okay, well, I'll withdraw that then.
Follow up, follow up on that, though, Stephen. Is it just the pad sites that are two foot above the elevation, or is it the entire lot? And are the roadways going to be used as channeling for flood flows?
So, my recollection is that our standard is specific to the home site. I, I don't believe they're using the, the roads for flood conveyance, they're keeping everything in that 100-foot buffer.
Jump in, Mike, if you have any answers for this.
I'm Jeff House. This is still, okay, it's still on. A couple of things here I would like to add that have been discussed, too close to the mic. In the 100-foot buffer, we are actually adding compensatory volume at a 1.6 type ratio, so we're, the threat of a flood is actually reduced by the construction of this development. So, we're overcompensating for the amount of field that we're placing in the floodplain. As far as the, the roads and the lots are all going to be above the 100-year floodplain.
So, the lots as well as the home pads themselves?
Right.
Okay.
Well, here's my thought on disclosure on floodplain. I think you have to be very careful how you draft something like that, because, you know, floodplain's an issue you're warning people about, maybe it should be nipped in the bud right here.
Mayor, Supervisor Bunkowski asked for, asked about certain maps, I just want, in case he does speak to it, it's, the map appears right before page 466. There's not a page number on it, but it's technically page 465 of your packet, and page 466 does have a page number. And Mayor, thank you, I understand your comment.
That map shows the proposed lot superimposed over the floodplain, rather than this map that doesn't show the lots.
For the questions of Steve, Hope, Lee, anybody on this panel? No, we'll take public comment. Thank you, Hank. You want to say something?
Sure.
Go, jump in.
Good morning. For the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group, you've already heard from Lauren and Jeff. I just wanted to give a little bit of background on kind of how we came to the plan that we had. As you know, we've, during the specific plan review, and then prior to submitting, formally submitting our tentative map, we did hold two neighborhood meetings at the church there at the corner of Solomon and Railroad. And a couple of major changes came out of those meetings, first being, we heard loud and clear that, that the neighbors did not want the extension to Firebox for secondary access, and the school district was less than thrilled with that. So, that's kind of the reason for the delay of getting, getting the map to the, to the timing of where we're at, was to negotiate and getting that access up to Fifth Street, which I think is a, a major win for, for everybody. The other thing that we did is we actually reduced our total lot count by 31 lots. So, we're at 103, the zoning would actually allow for up to 195, but we reduced that down based on input that we received from the neighborhood. To address some of the concerns that were raised during the planning commission hearing, first the noise, definitely we would be in full agreement with a disclosure. I did speak to an acoustical engineer who estimated that at the property line, that the noise level would be about 70 decibels, and if you compare that, just by way of comparison, that's about the equivalent of a washing machine and dishwasher. So, when you get inside the house with double pane windows and air conditioning, he said basically it would becomes like white noise inside the house at best, even during peak hour. So, that gives you a little frame of reference on the noise. What I think is important to note, that the construction of this project actually will significantly reduce the noise impacts to the existing residents, because it serves as a buffer that our homes will actually absorb that sound. As far as the wetlands, and Jeff, if he has specific questions, Jeff is much more qualified than I am to speak to this, but we are in the process of filing our nationwide 404 permit with the Army Corps of Engineers, and we have set aside the area for, for the mitigation to occur along the linear ditch. Same, once again, with the, with the floodplain, Jeff is much, much more qualified to speak to this, but I'll just give you kind of a, a quick overview. The CLOMAR F has been submitted to FEMA, we have received comments back, those comments have been addressed, and we expect approval of that CLOMAR within the next 30 days from, from FEMA. We are consistent with all the standards of the, of the code, as well as the specific plan, and also I think it's important to note that we're in agreement with all the conditions of approval. So, with that, our team's here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, is there anybody on this team? John, Supervisor Barrett.
Yeah, what is the price of these homes envisioned at this juncture? Could go up, obviously, if inflation goes up.
I, from, from what I've heard, and, and I'm, this is somewhat speculation, I think they're the upper threes to mid-fours.
It's always speculation when you're talking about the future, thank you.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Anybody else on this panel? Stacy, jump, go.
Thanks. I just, I, I certainly understand what you're saying, Hope, in terms of enforcing the access to Fifth Street. So, I'll, I'll ask you, when do you anticipate having Railroad through to Fifth Street in the phasing of this project?
We would likely have a temporary access through during construction, and I mentioned to the planning commission on the record, I'm happy to stay on the record, and today we have no objection to posting signs that encourage the construction traffic to use the Fifth Street access. As Hope. As Hope mentioned, you know, you might get a delivery, for example, if somebody's coming in with roof tiles or something. And if it's not on their GPS, they may not realize. But the day-to-day crews will know to use Fifth Street, not railroad.
So is it a requirement? Did I see it's a requirement that Fifth Street access be approved before a building permit's issued?
The requirement of the specific plan, and it should be housed in these requirements as well, was that Fifth Street had to be constructed prior to final map. And then, but it could be to a lesser standard, and then need to be upgraded at the 75% build out to urban collector standard.
Okay. Okay. I'm really torn on not putting a condition in there about limiting access to Fifth Street. I totally get that we just don't have the ability to enforce it. But if it isn't a condition, then we don't even have a right to call them and say, stop it.
We can certainly, with the applicant's concurrence, have a condition that states at the time Fifth Street, the connection to Fifth Street is complete. Signs will be placed at the intersection of Railroad and Salomon directing construction traffic to Fifth. And then maybe another sentence saying the city staff will not enforce traffic or something like that. Just so in the future, when this gets there, if we get calls from the residents, it's clear that when the board created the condition, they were clear, there wasn't an expectation that the city staff would police the traffic. It's just tricky, to be honest. But.
Okay.
John?
I mean.
Light out, John. Go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That brings to mind Stacy's question, the completion of the road at, I think it was 70%, something like that. But then there's a bond if you don't. What's your plan on that? Are you going to complete it at the juncture that the, that it calls for? Or are you gonna?
Yes, that is the plan. Correct. To complete the road.
And how much is that bond? Anybody know yet?
It's.
What will happen is they have to initially build it to a standard. It can be a lesser standard. So the bond amount will be the delta. So what they'll do, the delta, the difference between the lesser standard and the required standard. And what they will do is they'll provide an engineer's estimate at the time they're requesting to bond. Our engineering staff will review that estimate, agree on the content or the substance of the improvements necessary, agree on that number. And at that point, they'll bond for 150% and enter into an agreement. So that number is unknown at this point because we don't know what our baseline construction will be.
If I could add one thing on the construction traffic, a project that we've done in the past had a similar issue where the neighbors were concerned about construction traffic. And we agreed to a condition, we're happy to do it here, is on those signs that we post, that we post a phone number directly for the contractor, the GC, so that, I promise you, when they get a lot of calls, they will act to make sure that their crews are using the secondary access.
Go.
And so, hope my preference would be instead of adding a line to that condition that says that the city will not enforce, that you add a line saying that the developer will enforce. Then on condition 2020, which is what we were just talking about, the extension to Fifth Street, it doesn't provide for the, any bonding. The upgrade has to happen prior to the 78th home being built.
The bond is between.
Yeah, you could bond.
Yeah.
Right. You could bond upfront, but the connector road to Fifth Street has to be built before the first house is built. And then it has to be upgraded to the collector standard prior to the 78th house being built. There's no bonding substitution there.
In light of our earlier discussions today, who owns the road underneath this new addition of railroad? Who owns the property now and who will own it when this development is completed?
Currently, the Lampa family owns the property, and it would be dedicated, offered for dedication to Carson City.
Okay. All right. Public comment? Let's move to that. Ms. Clark, good morning to you.
Good morning. Thank you for holding this session. My name is Kelly Clark. I live at 1910 Jock's Way. And I'd like to, first of all, respond to a few of the misinformation that I think has already been presented this morning. John Barrett, you asked what time the traffic study had been conducted. This was important to me because we live in that area, and we had specifically requested that the traffic study be done during school hours. In fact, if you look at the report, it was conducted at 4:15 after school hours. So I'm concerned that there are a few misrepresentations that have been put forth already this morning. Another fact that I'd like to bring to your attention, at the time that the new 580 was put in, that area was zoned agricultural. There was no requirement for a sound wall. And if you drive that area, you'll see there is, in fact, no sound wall whatsoever. The city acted to change the permit or the zoning from agricultural to residential. At that point was when a sound hazard and a safety hazard occurs for residents in the immediate vicinity who will be living in those homes. I think that you should look very carefully at your regulations and your responsibilities. Where does your regulatory view change? The state said it was needed to have a sound wall. Why would the city not say that a sound wall was required? I think the only reason there's no sound wall, it was not residential at the time that the highway was proposed, and things have changed now. Also, I'd like to make, bring attention to the fact that the application, as presented, misrepresented that this project was in a floodplain. Completely said it was not applicable. And I believe that could affect additional reviews of this project. As this project is put forth to the state, they are looking at an application that they believe is accurate. It was not. Not in regard to floodplain. When you review the application, the page number that cited was not available for public view within that document. I think that's a concern. And I trust that you will look out for our safety and health. Early on, you took a very strong action and said the fire road was an emergency access or a temporary access was not enough. I really would encourage you to look at our safety and health for the long term, for the community, and for the people who will be living in that immediate area. 33 homes in the floodplain. I think with all of the media coverage we've seen lately about Lemon Valley and other areas that are affected by floods, we would want to be very concerned about building in a floodplain. And thank you.
Do you agree, Kelly, that the sound may be deadened more by development to the east of where you live? Sound from the freeway?
I don't think that the houses themselves will deaden, for one thing, once they raise up houses, because they're going to have to move them up, to put them up higher, to get them out of the floodplain. Yes, maybe they will buffer, but I would just question what the quality of life will be for those people who are going to be within feet of the highway.
Do you believe that they can comply with the FEMA and the floodplain regulations in the development of this project?
I believe that they will under the current regulations. But I would also say this, with climate change, and we're having this amazing flooding every, almost every 10 years, we're seeing significant flooding. I doubt that the floodplain delineation maps have already incorporated climate change and the fact that we're going to have significant continued measurable water coming down from the sky. I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna deaden the sound to my home. I believe that a barrier of some type, a line of trees at least, would provide some barrier. But I don't think the houses themselves will deaden the sound that's coming off that freeway. You know, the freeway opened on motorcycle weekend when all the motorcycles come from Virginia City. It is unbelievable already. It's really, really loud already. I don't think it'll be deadened at all, Mr. Mayor.
Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask the traffic engineer to address the discussion point that she made.
Thank you, Lauren Chilson, Headway Transportation. The ma'am is right. I've misspoke, and I sincerely apologize. It is 4:00 to 6:00 PM was the study period, and 7:00 to 9:00 AM. Yes, my apologies sincerely. The reason we study those periods is we're looking at the impact of the project. The project's impacts are the highest when it creates the most trips, which is the peak hours, the commute hours. This is a residential project. So we're looking at the impacts of that project, trying to identify the overall peak volumes, which typically occur during the commute hour. Yes, there are high volumes during the school hour as well. But overall, we combine the project and background traffic, less during two, excuse me, less during two to three than during the four to six hour. And so that's why we analyze those periods. But again, my apologies.
Can I just clarify, though? If I were to look at both the project itself and the school, you did, to me, the time that's really major is the 7:00 to 9:00 AM. And you did study that.
And that's correct.
When the kids are being dropped off at school in the morning, plus commute time.
You're exactly right.
I mean, that's when you're having, right? Because we don't have commute time between two and three. Like you said, people coming to and from work. But the 7:00 to 9:00 AM, you get both the school and the commute. So that would be your true peak for that particular area.
You're exactly right.
And you did study that?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just, I want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Kelly, let me ask you on a, just as theoretical point of view, on the floodplain issues. You may stay as well. You know, you raised a good point about how weather's changing, weather patterns are changing. Do you think it's fair to hold developers to something that's unknown as of right now? Or should they be held to existing law with respect to development of a wetland? Because if one, if the answer is, no, they could never build there because we don't know the effect of climate change, then what we're really saying is that property's unbuildable. But if it is buildable and is capable of mitigated through floodplain measures, then development can occur. I'm just asking which way you think it should go? No development at all? Because they'll never be able to meet the floodplain requirements? Or that they can, if they meet the current floodplain requirements, that may not be good enough down the road?
I think that the appropriate development is development that considers the long-term effects and codifies into the agreement, any agreement that the city makes, who's responsible for which portions. So if this project gets put on hold for however many years, it should be revisited. Absolutely, there should be revisiting of the rules. And do I think that the developer should be held accountable? I think the developer should be held accountable for providing an application that is correct and accurate at the point that it's submitted. There are many flood delineation maps that already clearly noted that this is in a floodplain. Why then did they not represent that in this application?
Okay. I can't, I can't answer that. And I don't know the answer to that. But I do know that sometimes applications are filed and changes are made to those applications. I'm not certain it's fair to hold someone to an application that they think is well-done. They file it, and then there's, there are concerns that are raised. And that the object of these hearings is to address those concerns that are raised. So I'm not so certain that the fact that they may have, I don't know, I haven't gone back to look, Kelly, as to whether or not it was included or not on the floodplain. But, you know, if, if the Army Corps of Engineers and FEMA, particularly the Army Corps of Engineers, say that, you know, you can build on this area because you've done sufficient wetland management, and FEMA says, you know, you can get, you still get the insurance breaks here because you've done what you can, how do you say that's not good enough? Or do we not trust what those agencies will say?
I think that you look at your municipal code, and you say, what are the things that we are supposed to, what are we to regulate for? I think under health and safety, you can help hold a developer to a higher standard than what is just set in municipal code. I think it's upon, it's on you to make those decisions. As you're voted into office, what do you think is reasonable? When you drive through that area last year, this year in the spring, that linear ditch is full with water. The water has been up to the edge already. That's even without any additional development. We have significant flooding issues in this area already. I think common sense should prevail.
Is railroad, is your neighborhood in a floodplain right now?
There are multiple houses on railroad that are currently.
Did you hear me back there?
In the floodplain, yeah. I'm sure right behind me, old Rick is probably ready to come up here and take you on, or encourage a lively debate, actually. So, and I, if, I wish I could answer more specifically about your questions, but I do think that the board has responsibility and you do for reasonable care. What is health and safety, and what is common sense? To me, it's common sense.
So the planning commission then made an error when it decided that the wetlands issue could be mitigated? Because they looked, as I understand it, they looked through the code and made the requisite findings that they, that our code requires. Now we're saying that they didn't?
I'm saying two of the planning commission members were very strongly opposed to the project based on the floodplain delineation. And I think that they had reasonable cause to have concern.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't mean to drill you that hard, but.
No, I appreciate a nice argument.
Because I, you know, I wonder, you know, sometimes, you know, sometimes in this world, and I've been in this position as well, you know, do you want to, do you want to throw mitigation as a, as a throwaway because you really don't want the project? Or do you want to do mitigation for the purpose of what it's designed to do, and that's mitigate development? That's all I was trying to get at. I mean, and I think, you know, we have to make that call here. So we'll go from there. But I appreciate it, Kelly. And I know each other a long time and so.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Did you want to talk? Come on up. Mr. Lee, how are you doing?
Thank you, Lee Harder. Welcome, Supervisor Giomi, this to the ongoing saga of this development. All the rest of the supervisors have, we've met before, shall we say. Excellent presentation by the prior speaker from the public. She happens to be my wife, and I too live at 1910 Jock's Way.
We hope you do.
There are at least two reasons why this matter should go back to the planning commission. First of all, I believe there has been a substantial failure to comply with the statutory requirements of Nevada Revised Statute, Section 278.330. Specifically, planning department staff is required to send a copy of the tentative map to two divisions within the State Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. They're, under Section 278.335, required to send it to the Division of Water Resources and the Division of Environmental Protection. In fact, Ms. Sullivan acknowledges she sent the tentative map. The problem is, the tentative map, as presented, is wrong, as detailed by my wife. This was, they knew it was a floodplain. They stated all the way along, it's not a floodplain. They state in the application, it does not go through sensitive areas. The site, the sensitive area delineation, wetlands delineation study had not even been done or published when they submitted this application. We find out there are the three wetlands there. Commissioner Esseline on the planning commission was the first one to tip us all off that there were 30, he said 33 lots within the floodplain. 32, 33. This, why wasn't the map, why wasn't the map available to the planning commission to see how much floodplain there was as the developer is consistently denying it? When questioned why the application stated there was no floodplain or sensitive areas involved in there, the response was, oh, it's a mistake. Okay, mistake, who knows? But the problem is, the planning commission knew or certainly should have. But the problem is, the planning commission knew, or certainly should have known, that that was a falsehood in this application. I'm certain it is a material misrepresentation to tell the Department of Environmental Protection and the Department of Water Resources, nothing to see here, no floodplain, no sensitive issues. And by the city forwarding this errant report to those required state agencies, they're complicitly upholding what the applicant said.
Do you want to address that, Hope?
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Harder indicated, we do have a requirement to submit the tentative maps to two state agencies, the Division of Water Resources and DEP. When we provide those, those maps, we provide just the map. We don't provide any supplemental information. The map has a seal on it with a signature by the engineer. As Supervisor Bunkowski pointed out to the other supervisors and the audience, page CFO of that plan set, which appears on page, I think it's 465 of your plans, of your package, clearly delineates the floodplain. To the extent there was an error, I suspect it was in a narrative provided by the applicant. That narrative never was put forward to the state agencies because there's not a requirement to. We simply provide the map itself, and staff has never indicated that there was not floodplain here. We've been very clear on that point. Thank you.
Stacy?
So, so just to restate, we complied with the NRS by sending them the final map of which we have a, excuse me, tentative map, of which we have a copy that does in fact show the floodplain on the map that you submitted to the state?
Correct, and I will add to that, the planning commission received the exact same map, which on page CFO definitely delineates the floodplain. So, the planning commission was fully aware as well in the materials they received.
So, what the planning commission didn't get was the supplemental pretty blue picture that you gave us?
Yes, I provided you with two slides in my PowerPoint. One is this floodplain, which is simply from our GIS map. And the second is the aquatic resources, and I provided you with the entire aquatic resource study. I had not, although those are all both part of the record, I did not provide those to the planning commission in their packet.
Thank you.
I'm at a loss. I don't understand which, could you put up on the, on the display which map you sent to the two agencies?
You gotta, you gotta, hang on, we gotta make sure we're talking on the record here, so we get it all picked up.
I don't know.
Mayor, if I may, for the benefit of the record, the plan set starts on page 437 of the board's packet and extends through page 466. It's a rather large plan set, and the entire plan set comprises of the tentative map. It's probably about twenty-five pages. Thank you.
Can I ask a different question? Because, so, when we find errors, like they made a error in saying it was subject to open space narrative things, is there any obligation or way to do strike-through corrections? Just so that five years down the line, ten years down the line, that when people look at things and it makes it easier for the public that we require them to do a strike-through correction? I just think it would help all bodies so that they're not looking at something going, no, we already fixed that error. Well, they're still thinking there's an error in a map that you submitted, which there isn't, but they think so. So, I'm just wondering procedurally if we could ever just condition that applications be amended to fix the errors, so that the public record is cleaner. I don't know, just a, it's just a thought process, because I think it's very difficult. And in fairness to the public, it would be nice to see it come back together correct. Just a wild thought, maybe.
Okay, Brad?
So, Hope, I want to clarify on the record, the Department of Water Resources, the EPA, and the Army Corps of Engineers, they all have the correct information regarding either the floodplain or the wetlands.
The staff has an obligation to provide the tentative map to two state agencies. The staff has done that. The map is the one in your packet. It does have a seal with a signature on it by the engineer. The staff does not submit to the Army Corps of Engineers. My understanding is the applicant's been in consultation with them, so I can't speak to what's been submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers. Although you do have a wetland delineation report prepared by Resource Concepts, which is a reputable engineering firm in the city, who has prepared that delineation report in anticipation of jurisdiction by the Army Corps of Engineers. Jeff House or Mike Rayly can probably speak more specifically.
And we have a condition as part of the tentative map that requires 100% compliance with all conditions and recommendations from the Army Corps.
That is correct.
Okay.
He wants to talk. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
I'm not sure how we can approve this without hearing
Who are you?
Oh, I am, I'm Old Rick. I'm Rick Riendoe. Riendoe is R-I-E-N-D-E-A-U. I live at 1730 Railroad Drive. I live in one of those houses that comes with an entire acre. I bought it when I was young. Phew, and I know this.
Haven't changed.
Yeah, it's still there, and I am, I have changed a lot. I didn't anticipate any of that. But we're talking floodplains. When I bought my house almost thirty years ago, nobody told me about flooding. That was all news. And the map that I was given says right in that new neighborhood, this is minimal, wait a minute, area of minimal flood hazard. Oh, really? In the almost thirty years that I've lived in my home, when the flood control canal in Linear Park overflows, water, the water table comes up, and it comes up under my house. My predecessors, the first buyers of my house, had put a piece of carpet down under the house for their daughter, who was little, to play on with their kids. That is in the process of rotting because of the seepage that has come up under the house. Now
Think you gotta be a little careful about what you just said there, because I'm not certain you want to say that somebody had to let me just say it like this. You know, I have a, I have a home that was built ninety years ago, ninety, eighty years ago, 1936, and it has an old wine cellar in it. And we used to have kids go down there, and our kids go down there and play until the fire department came by and said, you know, that's a no-no, guys.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any kids.
Nobody, but, but the one who had the carpet under there, I think, I don't know why they would have a carpet underneath their house and put kids underneath the house.
I don't, I didn't question what they did. I was just interested in buying their house.
Okay.
So, I wasn't policing them at all. But it surprised me to find out that the water table seeped up there. And I don't think the other people along my side of the street, now remember, I got one house per acre, so I'm one of eight houses on eight acres. Now, the plan is, is to put four houses on each acre in that same area. I go, really? Are you kidding me? That's the difference. There are, in my twenty-six, almost twenty-seven acre neighborhood, there are sixty-five homes. And what's being proposed on about the same-sized property, twenty-six to twenty-seven acres, they want to put a hundred and three. Why? Because they want four houses on each of my acres between the new railroad and the flood control canal. I'm going, they're all going to have that, same kinds of problems. And like I say, minimal flood hazard? Are you kidding me? Yeah, eventually, I got a feeling that that house's foundation is going to suffer from the water table coming up periodically. Now, I know, four times over thirty years is not very often. But I think Kelly made a point that our climate is changing, that it, we can't predict it. I would like simply the rules to be followed. When we first started this, I found in the code that there had to be two access roads. And when that planner, the developer, proposed one, and the planning commission sent that to us, we asked for two, and then they said, okay, we'll put it over on trolley, and which also feeds rail. Guess what? They're not looking out after the code. They're not planned by the rules, so to speak. So, now, we're all suspicious. We don't trust what's going on. Really? Are you kidding me? You mean to tell me you can't wait for the Army Corps' report? I'd like to see a FEMA report in writing regarding the wetlands. This doesn't talk about wetlands. And I got lectured before the last planning commission meeting that there's a huge difference between the definition of wetlands and floodplain. Floodplain you can build on. Wetlands, hmm, grab your, be careful. I go, are you, really? We're still not planned by the rules? What is this? A number of my neighbors who don't participate with any of this, and this has been going on for a long time. So, you can't fight City Hall. Are you, who do you work for? You work for us. Yeah, what is the deal? You represent us. Our concerns are your changing. This project is going to change the spirit of our neighborhood. I don't own the pasture. They're going to build on the pasture. I get it. Can we cut down some of the homes? Can we watch out for this floodplain? Can we wait for the Army Corps to give us an analysis of what's going on and what it's going to take to fix it?
They can't build before they get that approval.
Pardon?
They can't build us, they can't put up a stick until they get that approval.
Is there any way that this neighborhood can see what that approval is?
As far as I'm concerned, it's a public record. I don't know.
And the FEMA report regarding the wetlands?
It's on public record. I would hope it is. I mean, I don't, I've never heard it's not.
I think the problem, Mr. Mayor, is when do we get to see it? When they submit for the final map or when it comes in? I mean, we have state agencies yet to put in their letter of approval.
When do they get to see that, Hope?
We would have that, that information prior to construction permit. So, there's not a formal public meeting at that point. It's administrative. But we, I mean, Rick and Lee both have me on speed dial. They know how to reach out to me. They're welcome to call, and I'm happy to make anything we have available to them.
It just seems premature when the city has yet to review the floodplain modifications. The Corps of Engineers has yet to weigh in. FEMA has yet to weigh in. The state agencies have yet to weigh in.
Lee, I'm not so certain, you know, I get, I would love to have that as well, and I'm not being critical of anybody here. But, you know, it's one of those ones where it's a massive chicken and egg. Who does what, when? I mean, because the other side's going to say, well, I've got, you know, I've got to get an entitlement before I'm going to go spend money on a, on a, on a CLOMAR. I'm gonna, I gotta have, you know, I gotta have some certainty of where I'm going. On the other hand, we're being asked, well, you don't go anywhere until you get a CLOMAR, and then we'll decide whether or not it's good enough for us. So, you know, it's one of those questions of, I think Kelly said it right. You know, the only thing you can really do on this, if you're going to be fair, and we represent the folks in that, and that includes giving a fair hearing to folks, not just individuals. A fair hearing, that's what's required by us under our oath of office. But I think, you know, it's, it's difficult to say, you know, you got to do this before you're going to get that. And I get what, what, you know, I'd be probably making the same argument. But I do, I do get concerned that, you know, it's hard, it's hard to develop a piece of property until you know that you've got your entitlements. And so, the theory is, one, comply with the rules that we've got. Comply with those rules, and then make sure that at the end of the day, that those rules are complied with. I mean, that's about all we can do. And I can't, I can't give you any more certainty or sanctity that FEMA or BLM is going to operate in good faith. I don't know that. I assume they would, but I, but I assume they'll do, you know, for me, every time I've seen a FEMA application come through or a floodplain, those guys are like, you know, I can't understand it, because they're, they're terribly picky. But, so, you know, I'd just say, I, you know, the fact that, you know, some of the application has been changed or whatever, I think that happens. And, and it should happen, because people have different concerns about it. Like, you know, we're talking here today about wetlands and floodplain and noise. We're talking about that, and we should. And that was talked about at the planning commission as well. But, you know, in our regulations, as far as I read what's going on here, is that the planning commission and our staff made the determination that this application, as it stands now, as amended with the conditions on it, meets the requirements of city code. So, and I appreciate that you may not agree with that, but that's what we're getting here. So, I don't, I don't know where else you would want us to go on that issue.
So, you do eventually here today give final approval to this project? Is that true?
No, no, go.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to speak to the sequencing, starting today. We remember when we were doing the master of the specific plan. I think there was frustration by the community, because we kept saying, well, we're going to handle that tentative map. And I think there was some frustration. So, I want to talk about start to finish and kind of, there's more public review. Should this be approved, we then go to construction drawings. We don't approve construction drawings until all outside agencies have made their approvals. That includes Army Corps, FEMA, so on, so forth. Once they've built the infrastructure, consistent with all those outside agency requirements and so on, so forth, we come back to the board. When we come back to the board for final map approval, they cannot build a house until the Board of Supervisors approves the final map. As part of the staff presentation to the board, we are required to go through every single solitary condition of approval and explain to the Board of Supervisors how each of those conditions of approval associated with the tentative map have been complied with. And should we find there's not compliance, we will not recommend approval of the final map. We will have the FEMA and the Army Corps information prior to the board's consideration of that final map. And I anticipate the board will expect us to speak very specifically to it, given that we have conditions of approval that rely on the action of those agencies. So, again, every single condition you see, we state that condition in the staff report, and we respond to how that condition's been met. So, there is another public meeting. At that public meeting, for sure, we will have the information from FEMA and Army Corps. And once the board, should the board approve the final map, the applicant then can record it. The lots are created, and they can start building houses. But what the board's doing here is just another step where they're saying, okay, these will be the next set of rules. Now, when you build it, you have to follow all these rules. And by the way, you don't get to record until we have evidence that you followed all those rules. Thank you, Mayor.
Brad?
And Ms. Sullivan is correct. She, her phone number is on speed dial, and she has been very courteous in furnishing information when requested.
Well, not to put you, you and Kelly and your neighbor there to shame, but you guys are no slouches either, so, pretty good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One last thing on this thing, and I know this came out of the planning commission, was that the people in my neighborhood were talking about worrying with construction vehicles coming down Railroad Drive, the existing railroad drive. And what came out in the planning commission, whoever the head of that was, came up and said, well, there's a school zone right there, so of course, they're not going to use that, would they? And of course, all the construction guys said, no, we wouldn't use that. We will use the Fifth Street. I would like some condition that says, you got to use the Fifth Street. Once that school gets started, Fremont is right there, and they're expanding it with all kinds of heavy machinery that's been a lot of time backing up with their beepers going. Drives me crazy. Okay, three hundred more students in that school? They walk down my street. A whole bunch of them do. These little kids. And the last time I mentioned that to the planning commission, I was told, well, they'll have to walk on the sidewalk. There's one sidewalk on one side of the street. They're little kids. They're, it's early in the morning, and it's late at night in the afternoon. I don't want that construction traffic going down. I would like some requirement that says, build it to Fifth Street and then use it. Use that Fifth Street to get into your construction projects. I don't know if that's possible. I've not ever gone through this before. So, there are many stages here that I don't understand. I just know that I've got some fear, and I've got some frustrated neighbors, and I would like to have peace again. The spirit of my neighborhood is going to be changed. I get it. I can't do anything about that.
You want peace in Railroad Valley. I get it.
So, Rick, Supervisor Giomi has already proposed some language about a condition to require the construction vehicles to use Fifth Street. So, I assume that when we get to a final motion, that that language will be incorporated in there.
Which will be in a different meeting?
This meeting.
Today, today.
This meeting?
Today.
This meeting?
Today.
Okay.
Couple other points that you've made that I want to address. First, talking about the density, you said that you have a one acre parcel. The proposal on the table is for three to four houses per acre. That's not the developer's issue. We have a master plan. The master plan determines, the, the current zoning in the master plan determine the allowable density. The developer is submitting a plan that actually has less density than is allowed under this zoning. So we can't fault the developer for presenting a plan that meets our own conditions. And the master plan is a public process, meaning the public had input into that process. The water table that you talked about, when we, when this item came in front of us previously and we talked about disclosure language, water table was one of the issues that was on that list that I had asked to go into the disclosure because of the, this particular area, because it has a high water table. So we can possibly address that in the disclosure language as well. But circling back to a disclosure and talking about the noise with the freeway, I understand your concerns and that you like your quiet neighborhood, but I have friends that are from the city that, and I don't understand this because I grew up in the country, they like the, the sound of the freeway, they like the sound of ambulances, they like city noise. If we have a disclosure that's required to be signed by a buyer and they have a choice whether or not they want to buy in a particular area and it's right next to the freeway, they are fully informed and their choice and their preference may be to live there with that noise. That's not up to you or up to me to make that decision. That's their choice based on being fully informed, which they would be through the disclosure. So that's my personal feeling on that. The lots, the 32 or 33, depending on how you count them lots, that are currently in the floodplain are going to be taken out of the floodplain and that area of the floodplain is going to be replaced with compensa-
Compensatory.
Compensatory storage through, along the linear ditch. Okay? That's a whole lot of engineering, you know, mumbo gumbo that I don't necessarily understand the details, but I do understand that we have a lot of eyes looking at that and that it has been proven through engineering terms. So at some point, we have to trust the experts. And if they tell us that we're raising this area out of the floodplain, we're lowering this area over here to compensate for that storage, and it's not even one to one, for every square foot that we take out of the floodplain, we're replacing it with 1.6 cubic feet of storage, flood, flood, flow storage. So I guess what I'm trying to get at, oh, the final point I wanted to make was, you talked a lot about the application and that the developer should be held accountable for exactly what the application says. But this is a process and through this process all along, we have made a lot of changes based on our input, staff's input, and just as importantly, your input. The three of you that have been here at every single meeting and have brought your concerns forward, and those are concerns that we've tried to address. So we have made changes. That's why we're looking at an access to Fifth Street now and not a temporary emergency access, access to firebox or-
Trolley.
Yeah, or to trolley. So we have held this developer to a higher standard, including at the last meeting where I put on the record that the conditions that we put on this project go above and beyond what we would normally do because of the issues with the floodplain, with the high water table, with the location not being adjacent to utilities and infrastructure, that they're kind of doing this in reverse order from what we would normally see where you build off of existing infrastructure out, and this is being built at the far end and going back. So we had concerns there that we addressed. So we have held this developer to a higher standard. And I want to thank the three of you for, for participating in this process because it helps us when we get the input. But this process has gone the way it's supposed to go and we have held the developer to our standards as well as all these additional agencies' standards. And when the developer complies with that, we may not like the aesthetics of the project, but I don't know that we have the ability to deny the project. At the end of the day, they're going to have to make a decision on whether or not they can build this project with all of the conditions that we put on it. Is it financially feasible or not to build this? And that will be up to them to decide based on the parameters that we have in place today, along with all the government agencies that are going to step in and put their requirements on this project that the developer's going to have to comply with. So I hope that that kind of clarifies how the process works and your part in it and why, at least for me, at the end of the day, I may not like the project, but I don't know that I can deny the project.
Thank you. I want to say that I appreciate the Planning Commission. They were very open-minded and very responsive to our concerns as well. And you guys are fantastic. I, unbelievably fantastic. I feel like my city has a good eye on it, at you guys, and I'm grateful. Thank you for your patience and your explanations.
We're all learning. And if I figured out one thing in life, is that those, those who succeed in life never stop learning because you could always learn more.
You're talking to a retired professor. I, um-
You didn't come from Stanford too with Carter, did you?
No, no, I didn't.
All right.
I didn't.
John, Supervisor Barron's got a question before we move.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through this process, I've listened carefully as I know how, and since I was reporter for almost 50 years, I fancy myself a good listener. I'm concerned about, and I'd like you, Lee, or either one of you, and then Hope, and then after that, perhaps the representative for the developer, to tell me about this, what I would characterize in rough terms, what it seems to me you think is the hiding of the ball regarding the floodplain issue from the get-go from the developer, or maybe I'm making assumptions there. Could you-
Well, it just seems-
Into that and a greater-
It just seemed very strange to me that an experienced developer involved in development already in the Lampa specific plan area, the North Lampa Project, with its well-known floodplain issues, I see that mountain of dirt every time I, I look behind the high school, that they knew or should have known that there, there were floodplain issues on this specific pasture development. And the initial application flat out denied it.
And were you told that too verbally or you just saw it on the application?
No, it was, it was in the initial application when they had the one road access in that one. This is not-
And did you say at some point that they told you then that was a mistake or what was it?
Well, the hydrology and geomorphological reports by their experts were submitted prior to submitting the tentative map application. Those reports said, in a floodplain. They still denied it in their narrative to it. When I asked around the Planning Commission, that's not right, I was told that that's a mistake, you know, that-
The Planning Commission or Planning-
Planning staff.
The staff, okay.
Not just one, but two. It's a mistake.
Okay.
Well, if it's a mistake, don't take the application, but-
Okay. Now I'll, I'll move to Hope or Lee. Could you shed any light on this?
Yes, I'm going to speak in a bit general terms and I appreciated Supervisor Bagwell's comments. I'm going to say something you've heard me say over and over and over again. And when I first said it, I warned you I'd say it over and over again. When an application comes in, the staff's not pushing paper. We're looking at this critically. We're fact-checking. We're making, we're not necessarily agreeing with what the applicant has to say. The application is that, just that, the application. And there are times I take an application in and we do our agenda and the agenda describes the request, and I sometimes get the question, but we're not supporting that, so why is it stated that way? Because that's the request. Staff isn't necessarily in agreement with what the applicant says, and this is generic, my comments at the moment. So staff looks at every single application critically. We are fact-checking everything. We don't take anything for granted. We're analyzing everything against the city's policies and the city's regulations. And here's my repeat, we cast a wide net. We try to think of everything we can think of when we're reviewing this application against the findings of fact to ensure that we're considering every potential impact and we're identifying the mitigations. Then we go to the Planning Commission. The staff doesn't get the benefit of the public hearing and going to what Supervisor Bagwell said, the applica, the neighbors get noticed, they come in to look at the application. The staff report is typically not done at that point. And we don't necessarily have the opportunity to sit there and talk to the neighbor and say, oh, by the way, if you read page seven, they're wrong, and I'm going to tell them they're wrong. Usually you just kind of do a high-level overview of what the request is because you know you're going to do your staff report and you know you're going to put it on the record. So when Supervisor Bagwell asks about correcting the record, traditionally and typically, the record gets corrected through the staff report because the staff is confident in the facts that we're putting forward in our staff report. So the Planning Commission has a public hearing. We have a lot of public input and they get a lot of public input. Staff may hear things we didn't think about when we cast that wide net. You're coming up with solutions that staff didn't think about. I said, I think it's a good idea to have a sign, but I don't want to enforce it, so let's not put it in. In the course of this meeting, you all have sort of resolved that. Okay, let's have a sign and let's put the general contractor in charge of enforcement. Things come up through the collaborative process, but when staff's all by ourselves sitting there, we're working together to do our report. Planning Commission gets public input, they get ideas, they say, you know what, let's improve upon this. Let's give the board a different recommendation that improves upon what staff put forward. There's not always agreement because we're always getting more data. You just got more data than the Planning Commission because I understood the Planning Commission was very concerned with the floodplain and with the aquatic resources. So I brought that forward to you. I, I missed that. I didn't catch that the Planning Commission was going to have that level of interest. So I learned. I brought it forward to you. So when you say, well, the applicant had this mistake, why didn't we just stop in our tracks and redo the application? I, I'm being honest with you, I never assumed that the facts put forward by an applicant are correct. I fact-check every single thing.
Thank you, thank you for all that.
Thank you.
But at what point was the developer informed that there was that mistake at the Planning Commission?
Different things happen at different times. There are times, and Mike Greeley's coming to the table, I'll call Mike and say, Mike, where are you finding this requirement? Because I can't find it. And he'll say, oh, sorry, I guess it's not there. And for example, the open space requirement. Mistakes are going to happen by everybody.
Could you then cast some light on this for me?
I can, I can cast light on-
I'm telling you ahead of time that I now have a trust issue, but I'm, I want to be enlightened.
Sure. Our firm was retained by Blackstone Development to put together an application to go with the tentative map. And a report was submitted, and I know because I wrote that report, that there was reference to the CLOMAR that would remove the site from the floodplain. I will tell you that since from the time that we submitted our original application, the map has morphed three, four times based on access, based on reduction in lots, based on Blackstone Development. I'm, I'm not trying to throw anybody on the bus. In an effort to save money, amended our report that we submitted without any input from me. Whether the CLOMAR reference was taken out, I can't speak to that. But I don't think if, if they did, it was intentional. But there was discussion that the area would be removed from the floodplain and would therefore be eligible for development. So I think there was maybe a little confusion. You know, somebody that's not involved in that terminology from day to day may not have understood the reference for the CLOMAR.
Okay. Supervisor Giomi, go.
Yeah, you know, I'd just like to add that at, you know, as a board member up here, I, I don't, I mean, the last thing I look at is the application from the, from the applicant. It's the last thing I look at. Because by the time it comes to us, the Planning Commission has looked at it, staff has looked at it, and the application that an applicant has filed has been fact-checked and gone through ad nauseam so that I, I do look at it, but I look at it after staff has filed their report and the notes from the Planning Commission and the other city agencies have been put forth. Because that, to me, is factual information that I'm looking at. The application is, it's an application. It, I, I look at it as a formality. It, it, it's a starting point. It's a proposal. And as you dig into it, and, and look, when you're filling, when I'm reading those, there are questions on there, and, and I fill them out as a member in my private capacity, and I come up to a question that makes no sense to me. I don't understand this question. Doesn't apply to me. But maybe you try and fill it out as an applicant in an effort to be open and forthright and, and you fill it out the wrong way by saying, yeah, there's an open space requirement. Well, there's not an open space requirement. And I'd like to address one other thing. Can, Hope, sorry to interrupt you. Can you put that, the pretty blue map up? That's really pretty, but that one. So, so Rick, your comment is, how can it say area of minimal flood hazard? And, and you even pointed that out here. So this, this is an overlay of a FEMA-approved map. So FEMA has flood zones, flood districts, and they're pretty specific. They're, they're mapped very specifically. So on a given parcel of 40 acres, you can have area of minimal flooding to a full-on floodplain. And so that's what you see there, where they're talking about area of minimal hazards, the area they're talking about is that bench on the property that is out of the floodplain. So that's why when you see area of minimal flooding, it's not speaking to the whole parcel. It's speaking to the part of the parcel that is indeed not in a floodplain. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that, that's why it's confusing.
It does not show wetlands either.
Well, because this is a FEMA floodplain map, not a wetlands map. So-
I thought FEMA oversaw wetland.
They do not. Army Corps of Engineers-
I'll explain.
I thought the Army Corps looked at floodplain.
Other, other way around. You're, you had the right agency, just had them in the wrong order. Anyway.
We're in process. I get it.
Well, at the end of the day, I want to say, you know, the public process here, uh, you know, the, the issue of the second access here almost killed this project because, you know, the, the issues that your neighbors out there raised out here. And so I'm glad to see that they could, you know, and I, I thought they would never be able to get off Fifth Street. I mean, now, now they've acquired property there, I guess that they have, they can. But that's one example of how these things move and how, you know, how, how an input from the neighbors can, can affect things because this really was, you know, without a second access, without that road coming off Fifth, this was going to die. Okay, all right. All right, further public comment. Anybody? Okay, Lee.
Thank you very much.
All right, come on up. You guys did a great job there. Sorry to-
My name is Carol Lee Challander and I live at 1416 Caboose Drive, which is right on the corner of Caboose and Railroad. Our little railroad drive is four blocks long and that's our only way to get in and out of our homes. I think the developer chose to build that in the particular spot because, oh, there's Railroad Drive. Guess what? It's there and it's free. I don't consider the extension of Railroad Drive up to Fifth as a secondary access. In my opinion, there should be a secondary access off of that railroad extension, you know, going somewhere. Because when I look at the map of railroad being extended up to Fifth, my heart's pumping, I think of the Paradise Fire and every, you know, everybody trying to exit in their cars and then burning up in their cars. Because who's going to use that Fifth Street? Not a lot of them. They're going to use our little four blocks of railroad drive. And I can't imagine that you can't make it a specific requirement that the construction of that extension, assuming you're going to approve this, has to start from Fifth Street, not on our little four blocks. Because if you lived in our neighborhood, would you approve two trailer dump trucks and lumber trucks and construction workers coming up your little four blocks, the only way you get in, 65 homes get in and out? I don't think so. And I look at the overall development going on. You have over 500 homes behind Carson High School and the Mormon Church. I believe there's another 200-unit development with Blackstone that's approved. You have this one coming on. You've got all those homes by Starbucks and FedEx. You have the development on Little Lane by the post office. All those cars, I mean, we're, you know, if you have- All those cars, I mean, you know, if you have two cars per family, you know, we're talking over 1,500 other cars, all trying to get access to the freeway or, you know, to get on East Williams. I just see traffic jams and road rage coming. And it's not good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Other public comment? Anybody? Anybody from the staff? Applicant? All right. Time for Solomon. All right. Bring it here. Board, what do you want to do?
Get a list of fixes.
If you want to try a motion--
Do you have a list that, to read into the record?
For the consideration of the board, some items that I'll put forward for your consideration based on your comments. Again, the staff has recommended, or the Planning Commission did recommend additional condition of approval 49 regarding consultation with the Army Corps and incorporation of the recommendation and requirements of the Army Corps into the construction plans. Staff has recommended and put on the record modifications to conditions 17 and 22, and those are essentially clarifying in nature. Based on your discussion, you may want to consider a recommendation, a condition of approval number 50, which would say, at the time of final map recording, a disclosure shall be recorded, recognizing the homes will be subject to noise from the freeway. I'm not sure if you also want that disclosure to say, and that the homes may be subject to a high water table. A modification to condition number 20 to recognize that the road will be upgraded or bonded and at the end of that condition to say, if bonded, the road must be upgraded prior to full buildout. A potential condition of approval 51, which would state, signs directing construction traffic to utilize Fifth Street shall be posted at Salabin and Railroad. The construction traffic enforcement will be the responsibility of the general contractor, and the general contractor shall include a contact phone number on the signs for residents to report concerns. And that's the extent of what I have.
All right. Somebody want to try a motion? Go.
First, I have a question, going back to condition 20, the revision to question 20. I don't know that I would favor a change in that. Right now, it says that they're required to build the improvements to the rural standard before House Number One gets built, and they're required to upgrade that to collector standards prior to the 78th home being built. That's a condition that we discussed pretty extensively before, and I prefer to keep that as it is.
Didn't we need the bond condition?
Add the bond.
That they add the bond? So that in case they didn't do it? I thought that was the part that was--
At the time of specific plan, I have the word in here.
Yeah, it was in the specific plan conditions.
Is the bond?
Exactly. Was the opportunity to bond. They could not bond for the initial construction. The initial construction could not be bonded. When they upgraded, the upgrade had to be in place at 75% buildout, although they would be given the opportunity to bond, provided full buildout of that roadway occurred prior to full buildout of the project.
So we have a conflict between two different approvals?
I put forward language for condition 20 to accommodate the opportunity to bond at the 75% buildout point and adding wording, which would say that if bonded, the road must be upgraded prior to full buildout. So that would be consistent with the specific plan.
Right. But our discussion previously was to go above and beyond that. And in this particular case, for this tentative map, to require the road to be updated to collector standards by the 78th home. So is the language adequate to indicate that this condition is above and beyond what was already approved in the specific plan?
As written, number 20 does not accommodate bonding. The specific plan does accommodate bonding. So if you would like to not have bonding, although I do think there's a benefit to bonding and that you'll still have construction traffic on that road, as written is more restrictive than the specific plan. The wording I put forward is just wording to create consistency with the specific plan.
I didn't hear that last part.
The wording that I put forward would create consistency with the specific plan. Because it would allow, at 75% buildout, you could bond for that incremental upgrade of the roadway, provided the roadway was completely upgraded to a collector standard prior to full buildout of the project.
We want to let them bond.
So I just-- Talk to me about how you see it going if we bond, in your mind. So they build, let me try and understand. So they build the Fifth Street Road before final map recording to rural standards. Then, at that point, are you saying they bond? No. Then go ahead.
The requirement is they construct it to a rural standard prior to final map recording. That means they can start using that road for their construction traffic when they're building their houses. When they hit 75% buildout, which would be the 78 homes, what would need to happen is at that point, we would have to verify the road had been upgraded to a collector standard, urban collector standard, or they stopped building until it is. With the bonding option, at 78 homes, they could bond for that incremental improvement. But the bond, the wording of the bonding agreement would state that the improvement had to be completed prior to full buildout of all 103 homes.
And in your mind, the advantage is that we then are getting a road that is solid and well-constructed and not damaged by construction at the point that we hit 100%? I mean, is that what you're suggesting the advantage to bonding is?
Stephen, for the record, I'd agree that there's that advantage because you do have a lot of heavy construction traffic during construction that would use that road.
It's just an option. Well, no.
Stacy said it.
Well, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I like what you're saying. I mean, but it's not what this says today. But I like the option, I mean, not the, I don't want to give them an option. I mean, I don't, either way, the way we decide should be the way it is. I think we need to decide what the best way is. To me, I agree with you. I like the bonding component because then we're getting, at the time it's completed, a nice new street, not one that has, you know, maintenance issues already.
So this is a timing issue. If we allow the bonding and you build out 102 homes and you sit on that last lot, then there's no requirement that, I mean, so is there an end date? Or can there be an additional end date? Because my understanding is that the traffic study allowed capacity, capacity was adequate to handle the 78 homes or 77 homes on the rural standard. The additional collector standard would accommodate the additional traffic from the additional homes. So if it's just a construction vehicle issue with road repair, that could be a separate condition and doesn't have anything to do necessarily with bonding. My concern is that if you don't build out the 103 homes, we're never going to get the collector road.
Right. Right. Yeah.
That was the whole point of putting the condition in there in the first place.
Can we ask them to repair at the end, then, any construction damage to the road by the time they get to the 103rd one? Because maybe that's--
Either that or tell them that they're going to--
We won't accept it until they bring it to the standard?
We're not going to accept it unless it's--
How about we just, we won't--
We accepted it at the final map. We accepted it.
No, we have to do a separate document like we did today to accept it, so we wouldn't accept it unless the road was in proper condition. And they know that on the record, right? When they go to deed it over to us, we won't accept it if it's not in condition. And we say that on the record right now.
And that's basically what the dedication language says. Anyway, we have to inspect the road and accept the condition.
We can handle it that way, so we get a good road. Okay.
All right. Let's stand in, I don't want to say stand in place, it reminds me too much of old days, but let's take a recess for a few minutes here. Let John come back.
Let John come back. Going to bring the meeting of the board supervisors back to order. I think before we broke, Ms. Sullivan, you were talking to us about additional conditions. You got those? Okay, you want a minute? All right. This time we'll say stand in place.
Where does that come?
Stand at ease.
Where does that stand in place?
I don't know, but it came out of my head somewhere.
You know, we're calling a...
She's ready.
You ready? Okay. What is, what other conditions you have?
Based on the conversation that the board just had, in terms of condition 20, it sounds like the following language may reflect what the board's discussing. The language of condition 20 would stay as written in the staff report with the following added language. Bonding for these improvements shall not be permitted. At the time of final map, the board of supervisors shall defer acceptance of the roads. The board of supervisors shall consider acceptance of the roads when the construction has concluded and will accept the roads only if all damage has been repaired.
All right.
Would it be okay if we got concurrence from the applicant on that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do something a little unusual here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, put a motion out, then discussion. I'm gonna ask anybody who wants to discuss that motion. We'll go from there. John, supervisor Barrett.
Yeah. Two-city standards, I assume, when you say that.
Collector standards.
Yeah, it will be, you wouldn't accept if it wasn't two-city standards, but in anticipation, there may be damage from construction traffic. We're putting the applicant on notice that such damage must be repaired prior to acceptance.
All right, let's try a motion.
All right. I move to approve TSM-19-054 based on the ability to make the required findings in the affirmative and subject to the conditions of approval recommended by the planning commission with the additional condition 49 regarding the Army Corps of Engineers as recommended by the planning commission and read into the record by staff. The revisions to conditions 17 and 22 as read into the record by staff. Revising condition number 20 regarding acceptance of the road and bonding as read into the record by staff and adding conditions 50 regarding disclosures for freeway noise and 51 regarding construction traffic being required to come in off of Fifth Street and posting signage with the developer's phone number and making the developer responsible for enforcement as read into the record by staff.
Before you second, do you want to include the high water table in condition 50? You mentioned it from...
I did, and we had a previous discussion about that, and I'd like to go back and talk to staff about that after this, so I don't want to include it at this time.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. Everybody clear on what this motion is? I don't usually do this because I think it's out of order, but today I'm going to make a, it's a beautiful day outside, we're going to make a special exception. Anybody in the public, either applicant or those who spoke, want to speak to this motion? Anybody? Rick?
I don't want to keep beating this dead horse.
It's okay, you can say that if you want.
I do, I'll keep beating the dead horse. I want the water table issue added.
Okay, that's your...
But I don't get what I want always so bad.
All right. All right, anybody else? Speak now for whoever hold your piece. Okay, on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
No.
Carried, 401, got the record there? Got it? Aubrey? Okay. All right, that concludes this item. Let's now take up concluding items. Thanks to all of you folks, you do a nice job. I know sometimes it's not as good as you want it to get, but they don't come any sharper than you guys. You're pretty good.
Thank you, thank you supervisors. Your patience is unobligating or a part.
You bet. Kelly, we'll see you later. All right, we're now on, where am I? Concluding reports?
25C.
Okay, let's take it up. You ready to do noon? You ready to do growth management?
Ready to go, I'm ready to do the growth management.
They told us we're going to shut off all development for the next year, right?
That was the last one through the door?
Then we don't have to worry about any of this anymore. Just say no.
Okay, this, this item is regarding the annual growth management and a resolution regarding the maximum number of residential building permit allocations that are permitted for, for next year, for the, for the calendar year and estimating future years and other specific things per the ordinance, as, as noted up there on the screen. It's the, kind of the status quo procedure for this has been to, to allow the number of allocations in any given year that would roughly equal about a 3% growth rate for Carson City. That's how the calculation's done, which for 20, 2020, that's, that's in air up there saying 2019, for 2020 would be 679 residential units. I'm going to go, I'll go through this really quick. You have the report, you have a lot of information from it for the planning commission and others watching. I went through it in detail, and if anybody's interested in more details on any of these, any of the information provided here, we can go back or you can find it, find it online for, in the packet. All right, how do we advance here? Sorry, this is the, per the code, the city entity looks at all these resources that must be considered when considering our, our growth rate and, and the number of allocations to be available in there. In the packet, we reach out to all of these organizations and others to solicit comments, and those written comments that we have are, are in the packet. Just noting, this, this is the historic graph showing the total allocations that have been allocated over the years and how many we've actually done. I mean, you'll see in there the spike in, last year in 2018. You can kind of see this also in this graph here. And that, that spike is really the result for the 370-unit Carson Hills apartment complex, where by the end of the year last year, they pulled all of their building permits for all 370 units, as we've read in the newspaper and, and the various news sources. They, they plan on building through this year, they'll be under construction, they won't all come in line, if any will come online in 2019, but they've pulled all their allocations. And so, as we're going, so far this year, we don't, there's nothing out there that we really anticipate a similar type of spike the rest of this year, or even going into next year for things that have been approved. But if you kind of average out, you can see over the last couple of years, we are trending up to where we've been in, certainly in the recent past. And if you, if, leaning forward, if you have any questions along the way at any of these, feel free to interrupt.
I just, on the, just from my understanding, once you pull a permit, is it, is it two years that they have to complete on the building permit and then they can get an administrative extension?
Building permits are good for 18 months.
18 months. And then they can get administratively?
But once they start, but, and they could get administrative, but once they start, then it's like six months between inspections to keep the permit alive. And they're, so they're, they're actively, they're, they, I think they plan on...
I was just curious, I mean, yeah, thank you.
Just some other information that's in there, I think we all know, it's not a surprise, it's kind of been, with assessor's data tracking the average housing sales price, not surprisingly showing that it's been going, this is the seventh year that it's consistently gone up. So with the data through, through May of this year, the, the single, it was about 365,000 was the median household price for a single family, that's for a single-family detached home was the average sales price. And at, at the bottom is a sales volume there, and I just noted this before to the planning commission, too. It's just a little bit interesting that, you know, kind of the pre-recession volume of sales was a lot higher than it is even now as the prices are going up. I don't know what that means. Maybe it's a good sign that we're not in a similar type of housing bubble now, that, but it's kind of surprising that the number of sales in, in those pre-recession times in Carson City. Okay, so growth management, kind of what, what, what we're, what we're planning for is a population build out. We've looked at it with our master plan, you know, we still think, think we're looking at about 75,000 to 80,000 people in the build out of the Carson City, you know, in the Eagle Valley here, which is represented, you know, depending on the various growth rates that you look at, that might be from, from 30-plus years out to 60-plus years before we get to that type of population. On this graph, I just showed it in bar form so you could see where we are now relative to how much is left to go to that, to that population, and it's about 8,000 additional units. And so it's, it's still a ways out there in terms of if we have 200 or 300 a year on average, it would be a while before we get to that point. Also provided in your information is a list of, of existing approved units that are out there. There's always a number of approved units, some of which get built, some of which don't. It's a, it's a snapshot in time, this is even old now, you just approved 103 more units that go on that list, and you would subtract whatever, in terms of vacant lots, whatever building permits we've issued over the last month. So that's always, that's always in flux throughout time.
I can ask you a question on one of those, Lee. You still have listed the vintage, didn't we have a condition on that, that it wouldn't, the approval would go away if the developer went away on that one? So should we be removing that?
No, a tentative map is good for four years.
Oh, but I thought we put a special condition on that one, that that map expired.
So there's a valid approval.
Put on that.
There's a valid approval out there. Tendative map is approved for four years per state law, and that's the time they have to come in to, to get the final map.
There was a...
So... There's nothing specific to, and we wouldn't, I don't, I don't, can't think of a situation where we would do that. They stay with the land, not a particular developer typically.
I know we put something special on that that said it...
Effective date.
Yes. That's right.
Referring to the, to the effective...
Effective date.
Yeah. Yeah. We, we put an expiry.
Okay, let's, let's, let's kind of make sure we're talking into the record here.
We can come back to it, you can look it up and get back with me.
Well, yeah, let's, let's, Hope, could you come up? Because I had the same question, and in this particular case, that developer didn't close on the property, so now we...
Right. Essentially, when you approved the vintage, you approved a master plan amendment and a planned unit development. The planned unit development and the master plan amendment both have an effective date of the final map. Since there's not a final map yet, neither of those items is in effect. But there was nothing that indicated if the developer left, it would expire. It's exactly as the community development director said, there's a four-year lifetime on this, and it was approved, I want to say, January 2016, so it's good till 2020.
And with all that said, we probably won't see vintage in exactly the form that it was approved. Although we don't have, we don't have a, we don't have an approved application in, for something different, but it's likely we'll see something a little bit different.
Well, that goes to a question, then. If, if, if an application comes in, does that wipe it out before the four years?
Yes.
And you get something? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. On, on the, you, you have a lot of the comments attached. I mean, we, there was some discussion, and, you know, I, I note some of the concerns of the planning commission discussion in particular in the school district. I think, you know, we've had joint meetings with them, continue to have meetings with them regarding their facilities and how they're going to accommodate growth remains an issue. I don't know that the issue is, is resolved or solved, or it's in fluctuation on a annual basis as to where there's, where the stress is on the school district system, and that certainly continues, and, and continues to be raised as a concern. But I will say at this point that the planning commission did recommend the proposed action by a vote of 6-0. And also on this slide, I wanted to point out, so long-term, you know, we're not giving the water analysis update with this as we have in the past because a water analysis was recently completed in the last few months and presented to you. That shows generally, we, we, the city are doing pretty good in all our planning efforts to accommodate growth to our proposed build out. That being said, we now, with that analysis, we're, our, our department continues to work with Public Works to kind of link the land use and the number of units and, and commercial growth with that water analysis to, to, on an annual, on an, basically on an ongoing basis, is to look at how individual developments are impacting our planned water usage for those parcels in the future. And it goes back to, I know some comments from supervisor Bonkowski in the past that they're looking at also about how that may affect water rights for projects coming in that use more than what we would expect a development to use on that certain property. So that's still in the works, and in the next, certainly in the next year for next growth management, we hope to have that tied together and worked out and probably bring something back to the planning commission and board before then, in the next few months. And then, so that, I think that kind of concludes this. So again, the recommendation, the, the resolution is attached with the recommendation of 679 residential units to be permitted for, that's, dates are going back there, to be permitted for 2020. It says 2018 on there, sorry about that. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to help you.
Any questions, Lee? Public comment on this one? Anybody? About the same as last year then, right? Okay. All right. And just so that we all kind of get a feel for it, actual build out of 75,000 or 80,000 folks wouldn't occur until, at least on this demographer's statement, until 2060 or something like that. Is that right?
Yeah. The, the, on the demographers tract is lower, we're actually, for planning purposes, you see that demographer estimates are actually on the lower end for kind of long-range planning Being a little bit more conservative and assuming it might happen a little faster, that would still be 30, 40 years out.
Well, putting, making developers toe the line more, want some infrastructure requirements that we haven't done in the past, and there's a reason why we haven't done it because we're trying to get the economy going. That may slow things down a little bit, too. So, anybody, anybody else? Anybody? Okay, we'll take a motion to approve the growth management ordinance.
I move to adopt resolution number 2019-R22.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, carried, okay. All right. Let's now go, we're concluding for this part, and then we're going to have a closed meeting. All right, we're on item number 26, non-action items, future agenda items. Board of supervisors, what do you want to raise? Anything to report? Anybody?
I would just reiterate my request earlier to bring the master plan item and any policy changes forward as a priority.
Anybody else?
Airport authority last night had presentations on strategic plan and master plan, and I hope you all will keep track of what's going on there. We got our great manager and we're moving real well. I also want to say that on the last item, that my, my vote had to do with lack of trust and the school district situation, and I think it's a sump lump looking for a place to happen.
Any other comments?
Taste of downtown this Saturday. Tickets, you can still pick up downtown. So it's on Carson Street like it was last year, and tickets are like around City Hall. You can pick them up.
Tickets are available downtown, and then Brewery Arts Center's having free music in the evening.
Correct.
Good deal. All right. I just report that last Monday, the city manager, deputy city manager, public works director, the public works director for the school district, and I think Dan Stuckey was with him, went to visit Tesla, spent an afternoon over there to listen, talking to their engineers, talking about what's happening in the, in the world of battery storage and things of that nature. It was a, it was a good, it was a good rundown. Kind of wanted our folks to get closer to them because of the battery storage issues, where we may be able to take advantage of that, depending on, you know, if the costs work out, battery storage that's on a commercial grade. But anyway, it was a good meeting with those folks. So, anyway, that's good. And if anybody else wants to do a tour of Tesla, let us know, let me know, and I'll make sure you get there. Okay? Anybody else? We ready to adjourn, subject to Mr. DA back there? Are we ready? Final public comment? Catherine? It's good to have you here. All right. All right, then, unless there's objection, can we be adjourned? Hearing no objection, we're adjourned. All right, we're now going to close meeting to talk about legal issues.